Call together, the call for order for the Board of Supervisors meeting on January 23, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Yes, good morning Supervisors. Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Anatoly?
Here.
And you have a Corn.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 26 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff when the Chair calls your name. Please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Thank you. Would you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you call your first item?
Okay, for your consent matters today, you have items 1 through 26. For item 9, I need a motion to continue to February 6, approval of an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $10,000 to increase budget appropriations related to University of California Cooperative Extension for fiscal year 1718.
Give a certain date?
February 6.
Okay.
So move, second.
Vote?
Unanimous vote. And then, just a note on item 18, you are adopting an ordinance to revise speed limit on Pringle Avenue, Sergeant Avenue, Orr Road, and New Hope Road, and approve the installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of New Hope Road and Sergeant Avenue. You waived reading on this on January 9. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, thank you. We do have requests to speak on 10 and 11, so we'll pull those aside for the moment. Anyone have any comments on any of the agendized items? Mr. Anatoly?
Yes, thank you ma'am Chair. I know others may weigh in as well, but just on item 4, I know that conversation with County Executive yesterday, and there was a follow-on memorandum from the airports director came through yesterday afternoon, or actually this morning at 8:54. So, I don't know, could I just ask me the County Exec to just weigh in? I know there's been a lot of conversation about pricing as it relates to particularly food concessions at the airport. And when we went into the, certainly the terminal additions and remodels out there, there was a real conscious effort by this board and certainly passports to make sure that, one, obviously provide a competitive atmosphere, but also that we didn't just put a captive audience in a situation where foodstuffs and other items would be such that they would be very, very pricey and not comparable to at least what you'd find on the street, street pricing so to speak, or at least within a range of that. And so, it might be helpful, I know that again, we received a brief memorandum from the Director, John Wheat, but I would maybe appreciate, Mr. Gill, if you could highlight, because I know you took a look at this prior to the Christmas holiday and came back, and let me just offer a little further explanation on what was in the staff report, because the staff report was a little bit, a little vague.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Serna has a question, and maybe we should call this item.
Yeah, I was going to ask to pull for separate consideration.
Oh, you're going to pull, okay, that's fine, we can hold it.
Anything else, Mr. Anatoly?
No, that's it.
Okay. And you want to pull item 4?
Yes, please.
Okay. Would you call item 4, please?
authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute amendments to the food and beverage concession agreements with food and beverage concessionaires to modify the merchandise and service pricing policy at Sacramento International Airport.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, members of the-
To the stand and, not to the stand, to the podium.
(Laughter)
Came from.
Different branch of government, all of a sudden.
You're ready, John, you've got to stay on.
I wanted to introduce the item before John. There's questions that have come up, and what I would like for John to do is give the detailed explanation that he's provided in the email. That will be part of the recommendation that goes in for our record. I did speak with John, and I did speak with the concessionaire that was proposing this, to determine the street pricing versus the, basically the concern is that Supervisor Anatoly said, and Supervisor Serna has also mentioned, is that at the airport, you're basically there. I mean, there's no other vendor that you can go to. So, but what I was trying to explore with them was that, is this absolutely necessary at this point? Is there other ways we can get there? And what you see in front of you today, what John's going to go through, is the work that we did with them, recommendations very similar to what we had in December, with a couple of changes in there. One of the biggest change is that, from the concerns I heard from board members, was that to make sure that we don't get to a point that the prices are so excessive, and the board does not know that those prices have changed. So, part of our recommendation is that, that recommendation is that when the airport director completes his negotiation, I'll be notified, and I'll bring that back to the board to let you know what we've done with that. But I want to have, with that ending, I want to have John walk you through how he got there.
Perhaps we could hear Mr. Serna first, so that Mr. Wheat could cover his questions.
Thank you. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that you listened to the concerns that I expressed, and apparently those of, those concerns of other members of the board. My understanding, I want to be clear, what you're proposing, Mr. Gill, is that the recommendation only changes from what it was yesterday morning in terms of the substance of a, an email? There's no, there's no, there's no, that's the instrument of, for the, for the change?
No, what we have is, we clarify why we're asking this request.
Okay.
The recommendation's very similar to what we had yesterday.
Right.
We're just amplifying what the recommendation means, and how we'll implement it. But that will be the clarification in this email.
My understanding is, the way it would stay, though, technically, it could, it would still give the airport director the discretion, and this is, you know, this is obviously a extreme example, but it still gives him the authority to go into negotiations and suggest a 50% above street pricing limit.
Correct. Technically, that's how that states, but what, and John's going to walk through this, is if we end up in that kind of situation, it'll be a very different dialogue, bringing that back to the board members, and that my position and John's position will have that dialogue. But I want John to walk through, the reason, one of the questions came up was, can we put a cap on it? And that's something that I want John to walk-
That's what I had suggested.
Yeah, you suggested that. We did listen to it, and I want John to kind of go through the pros and cons on the cap.
Okay.
Mr. Wheat?
John Wheat, Director of Airports, Sacramento County. Good to see you all this morning. Maybe before I start, I'll just go ahead and publicly read in the additional information that we sent to the board, just so that that's on the record. In an attempt to provide additional clarification regarding the proposed-
John, did you read the item?
Oh, yes, I did.
Oh, okay, all right.
In an attempt to provide additional clarification regarding the proposed pricing approach with our food and beverage concessions, I offer the following. There are several reasons that distinguish airport vendors from street operators. Most notably are the operating hours we require the concessions to operate, and the health and medical benefits for part-time employees. The impact on our concessions vary depending on the locations they operate, their hours of operation, and the number of part-time employees they employ. Providing us the flexibility to negotiate gives us the latitude to determine the appropriate pricing for each vendor that will ensure our continued high level of customer service, acceptable profit margins, and ensuring that the pricing associated is as low as possible to our customers. As I mentioned in the board summary, we will come back to the board with a report on what we have accomplished. So, I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions. If you'd like me to respond to the issue of the cap, I'd be more than happy to. So, why don't I start with that?
Okay, before you start, Mr. Anatoly has a quick question.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry Supervisor.
Yeah, John, just before you get into the cap, because one of the things in the written staff report, and you're modifying that by what you've offered thus far this morning in response to questions, but I wanted to be clear to point this out, because this is, you know, and I know you briefed with me back last December on this, but when we talk about this action, allowing the food and beverage concession operators to either increase pricing to a higher street pricing policy, which is part of negotiations, or align the prices with similar venues such as arenas and other airports, that really got my attention. It's one thing about, you know, what is our marketplace support here and, you know, for the Sacramento customers, or those coming to Sacramento International Airport. But when I think about arena pricing, I don't know, there's been people in this room or any other room that would, you know, again, you go prepared to empty your wallet when you go to arenas for, you know, whatever entertainment you want to partake in. And so, I guess I would just say, I don't, I don't see Sacramento International Airport being aligned with, I don't care whether it's in Golden One Arena or somewhere else. That, to me, is a completely different framework, maybe it's the world in which people operate in. So, I'd like to have some clarification, because that is what's in the written staff report. And I have faith in your negotiations out of your staff. When you start talking about arena pricing, or even other airports, I mean, you know, I know we talked about visits to other airports, and members of this board travel on occasion, and, you know, what they pay at O'Hare, or in New York, or San Francisco, should not be what's driving what goes on here in Sacramento. And I don't think it was intended, but that's what's in the staff report. So, I'd like to have some clarification for the record about, one, how you're going to approach this, and how you report back to the board. But I, for one, have, you know, and we've talked about this in the past, in this board, we went into remodeling and putting the major investment, public investment in that airport out there. It wasn't that it was going to be comparing to some sort of entertainment venue where people go prepared to, I say, empty their pockets for, you know, for being there. So, I just, I want to make sure we get that clear for the record, please.
I'll be more than happy to respond to that Supervisor. It is not our intent to set pricing associated with the Capital One, or, excuse me, the new capital pricing associated is. That's language that was put in there. As we go into negotiations, we want to keep an open mind with our food and beverage concessionaires. The biggest issue we're going to focus on is profitability. As they've provided information to us, some of our operators, some of our largest operators, with the current pricing structure and the current expense structure that they have, and this is not distinct to Sacramento County, this is happening in all airports, especially airports across the California area. So, what we want to do is just to simply have the ability to really focus on ensuring the appropriate customer service, that's number one. Number two is ensuring that our partners are making a profit. We're not saying they should make a lot of profit, but we believe they should at least get a return on their investment that they've made, for the capital investment that they've made, as well as a small margin of profit, for us to ensure that we can sustain the high level of customer service that we've achieved. And third, our intent is to keep those pricing as low as possible. I'm hopeful that some of the operators, depending on how they operate, will not need an increase, or it'd be a very small increase. Others may need something else, simply because of how they operate. So, the wording that was in there, and I apologize for not making that clear, that was just to provide us flexibility. It's not our intent to go to other, to go to San Francisco and say, what do you charge for a hot dog? I mean, we know that the pricing in San Francisco and in LA is at a much higher level than it is in Sacramento. If you look at our pricing today, there's a very large difference with regards to the pricing compared to some of those. But when you look at other airports in the California area, that are much closer to us, then I think that might make sense for at least to understand that pricing and how that's going to affect us. But as I said before, the real intent is to ensure continued customer service, the lowest prices we can get, that provide the operators with a return on their investment, and some profit margin.
Thank you. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So, on that, on that point, when you're in these negotiations, John, are the concessionaires opening up their books to you? Are they giving you a pro forma? Do they show you what their ROI is?
It's pretty tough if they don't give us information for us to make that determination.
So, you know what their margins are?
So, we, they've, we have, in the discussions that we've had with some, we know what their profit out of this location is, and what they're, if they're making a return. What we'll want to do is to ensure that we completely understand that. So, there'll be a lot of give and take, there'll be a lot of information they're going to have to provide us to make us comfortable, that what we're looking at is a true and accurate depiction of the situation here in Sacramento.
And the concessionaires that have been out there doing business for some time now, they've been operating under the current policy, which does permit, at your discretion, the application of, or the ability to charge 10% over comparable street pricing elsewhere, correct?
That is correct.
So, and that's been in place for, for how long?
The, the 10% is probably, that's been an industry standard for a lot of years, not necessarily anymore, but a lot of years. In Sacramento, it's probably, at least it's been in there ever since I've been here, so I assume it's been there for at least 10 years or five years. I know it's been here for five.
And, and that's-
So, when the new airport opened, I think all those food and beverage contracts-
I believe, that was in 2011.
We brought that to the board in 2011, when the new contracts were coming in and fixing it at 10%.
And so, they've been living with that ability, if it, again, if it's applied per the discretion of the airport director, up to 10%. And they've also been living with whatever else, whatever other cost structure applies to them, whether it's the pensions or the healthcare, correct?
Well, I think the one thing that's changed is the healthcare, in that additional, additional coverage was provided through negotiation to part-time employees. So, that is, that's why, that's the biggest change that's come over that. Plus, there are just continued market pressures placed on at airports. I mean, we, we continue to require, because of our customer service initiatives, we continue to work with our concessionaires that if we need to stay open a little bit longer, even though it might be a very slow period of time, we require that. We have the ability to set those hours for our concessions. So, it's, I think, a much more of a focus on the customer service, as well as other benefits that have been implemented.
And in the time that you've been our airport director, have there been any concessionaires that have, have left, or indicated that they need or want to leave because specifically they didn't have enough of a, enough of that 10% over street pricing to make themselves profitable?
No one said they're going to leave because they're under contract, but, I mean, we have had conversations with carriers that, or, excuse me, with vendors who have informed to us that this is not a sustainable situation.
And then, you mentioned that 10% is the industry standard, so what other airports in California permit their airport directors or, you know, an equivalent counterpart to your position to negotiate over and above 10%?
The several airports, all of the airports I'm aware of in California have adjusted this one way or another. The last one was San Diego, who took a very similar approach with what we're recommending today.
Did they just leave it open-ended?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wheat?
I think Mr. Wheat was going to explain the cap, the dynamic of the cap, right?
Oh, yeah, the dynamics of the cap, as I mentioned before, you know, when you look at the big variances compared to our operators and street operators, they operate somewhat differently. There are certain restrictions placed on them. One is the hours of operations. If you own your own operation here, somewhere in Sacramento, you really set that up to determine what you can get, what hours are you going to operate, that you can get to the maximum amount of revenue coming in, and then you close during the other hours. We have value, we have valleys of highs and lows and medium components, 20 hours, 22 hours out of the day at the airport. We require our concessionaires to be open during those periods of time, and we set the hours of time. If they were setting their own hours of time, they wouldn't be open anywhere near the hours they are, because they'd operate like street vendors. So, the issue, and they will, they'll vary with regards to how many operations they have, and the size of those venues, and the type of the venues, where they may use a lot more part-time employees than other operators. Some operators are set up that they can simply, the people that are employed there are really all full-time. And so, when you have a large contingency of part-time, you have more of an increased cost associated with the benefit side. And so, the reason for not recommending a cap is that everyone looks a little differently. And so, what we want to do is to negotiate them on those three tenants that I mentioned before, and then ensure that, and so, and so setting a cap, the reason we're not recommending a cap, if we were to say, let's, we'd like to raise the cap from 10 to 15%, what all that does is then basically say, every vendor out there is going to raise, has the ability to raise their pricing by 15%. That's really not our intent. Our intent is to really look at it and say-
I guess I don't understand that last point, because the mechanics of this, if I understand it correctly, would still give you the discretion to work within 10 to 15%.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So, they may ask for it, but you're in a negotiation, you may come back and say, you can ask what you want, but we're going to go as high as 13%.
Right. I think there's just an expectation that's created by setting a cap, and that's the reason that we have not recommended that. We believe that it provides us better flexibility to simply negotiate with the air carriers. I mean, our-
The vendors?
It's imperative upon us that we maintain appropriate revenues at the airport. The last thing we are going to do is put in a pricing policy that no one buys.
No, and I-
That is, that is a detriment to us.
No, and I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, you deserve a lot of credit for, and your staff for getting us to the place that we're at, and we've been acknowledged nationally recently as being the best, based on our size and our market. So, there's no doubt that the, the airport's in good hands. This, my objection is not reflective of you or the staff or anything else, other than the fact that I really feel compelled that, yeah, we have a responsibility to make sure the airport is successful, that the concessionaires are successful, but we also have, I think, a responsibility to consumers, that we make their travel experience going through SMF enjoyable, including the ability to afford a reasonably priced beverage, food, and whatnot. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, no one can bring liquids and food past TSA, so they're really, I mean, even if they wanted to bring their own ham sandwich, it's going to be very difficult.
You can bring ham sandwiches through, through there, you just can't bring liquids.
Right.
No cherry pie.
No mustard.
So, anyhow, I just want to make, make clear that I think without a, without a cap, I'm not going to be able to, to support this. I just feel that strongly about it. The other thing, too, is that if, one of the, the other rationales that's listed in the, in the board letter, is the expectation that the increase in minimum wage is going to yet again precipitate a- yet again precipitate a necessary adjustment to pricing so that they can't, so that the concessionaires can stay profitable. But if you think about it, it's kind of a double whammy, because it's based on street pricing. I think it's fair to say that the street pricing vendors, or counterparts to the operations at the, the airport, are probably likely going to adjust their pricing that, based on minimum wage affecting them. So, then we're gonna say, you know, you're gonna have a higher percentage to adjust at the airport based on that. So, now it's kind of a double whammy increase for the price of food and beverage at the airport. So, again, that's another reason, in my estimation, why a cap is warranted.
Supervisor Serna, I think the only thing I'll offer on that is I do agree with the minimum wage. In our conversation, since I got the feedback from you yesterday in talking with John, is that that was an example. We modified today what we provided to you, that that is not what's causing. It's those two items that we presented to you. Absolutely agree with you. That can't be double whammy. That street price goes by 10, we go up by 10. That's not, that's not what we're looking for.
And again, I appreciate the CEO coming back and giving us some food for thought about, about how to perhaps, for this board to be a check on this, but quite frankly, the way I understand it is that the airport director would go negotiate, they would establish a contract, we'd get a report back after the fact. So, this, the board would have no other action other than to listen and not affect necessarily what we think is gonna be, you know, a fair element of negotiation. That's why this today is, is really important, very critical, because this is really the only bite of the apple for this board to affect what actually happens, not, not after the fact, just getting a report back.
So, one of the things that I could offer is, on this, is that if the board does desire a cap, I think you've heard from our airport director what the pros and cons are. Could we live with a cap? I would say, yes, we could. But I think it's just the best business model that John was proposing, and I'm listening to him and listening to the concessionaire, the business case they made didn't make sense to me. But if it's a case where the board feels more comfortable having a cap, I mean, you guys give us a policy, we can, we can work with that.
Well, is there a cap Mr. Wheat could live with?
Until we finish negotiations, it's difficult to understand, to really give you that. I could, you could give me a cap, and I could come back, you know, after negotiations, say, you know, this doesn't work. I mean, I, the point is, is we're just simply asking for the flexibility to negotiate under those three tenants that I've recommended to you, and let us implement appropriate pricing to accomplish that. So, I mean, it's very difficult for me to answer-
What I'm getting from people is we're going from a cap to no cap, and that's making people uncomfortable. So, I'm wondering if there's a way to-
The in, the in-between step could be that you give us the authority to start some of these negotiations, see what becomes, comes up, what kind of percentage, and we can come back to the board and say, "This is what we're coming up with. Is the board comfortable with that?"
Just, okay.
To me, that's more reasonable.
That's fine, but realize what that is. That's an invitation for this board to get involved in negotiations indirectly.
That's-
So, the board's comfortable with that.
That's the reason why we were asking for the flexibility.
That's why I'm a little more comfortable with giving you a cap today and say, "Go forth and negotiate." I don't necessarily wanna negotiate. I don't wanna have us deliberate, you know, whether or not, you know, Esquire is-
It's 16 or 17.
Yeah.
I think if that's where the board wants to be, if you give us a cap, I hear from John and his staff what the issues are, but if that's parameters we have, we'll work with those parameters.
Okay. We have a couple of comments up there, Mr. Natoli.
Yeah. Just hearing the discussion, again, and recognizing, I think, some of the delicacy to maybe, you know, the negotiations, and Serna, I don't think that, you know, we as board members need to get directly involved, but I guess part of the confidence comfort level, again, recognizing, we've talked about here this morning, and I think the sensitivity to, you know, our concessionaires, but also to the public that we serve through the airport system, that, you know, maybe the direction being that the Director of Airports in consultation with the county executive will, you know, taking into account what's been commented here upon today, if we were to support it without a prescribed cap. I understand that if you put a ceiling, you hold some down, but then you, others may just rise to that, saying, "That's what I need, because that's what I need." And I think looking at this would, you know, require, you know, us not only looking at their profitability and/or their margins so that they can stay afloat, but also then, what is it, the street pricing out here in Sacramento? And if a, you know, hamburger, XYZ vendor on the street that has a concession at the airport, may or may not be a national chain, then, you know, how much additive is to that? And so, those are types of things, I think, again, and maybe, you know, Nav, you don't see it as your role to get that deep into it, nor John, but I, but to me, that's important. If we're gonna, you know, test the marketplace and kind of, you know, be in equilibrium with that, recognizing what's been in place here now for, you know, at least, you know, approaching a decade, if not more, with Terminal A, then I, I think it's important that, you know, this board have the confidence, one, not only that you're gonna go and negotiate a fair deal for all parties, but that, you know, we have some understanding that, you know, we're going from basically a cap in place, that people say they can't live with it any longer because of X, but, and asking us now not to have any cap whatsoever. And, and again, so I would see it that part of the recommendation would be, I think, in consultation with the county executive, that, you know, Director Wheat, his staff, and that you maybe do a little more comprehensive look, rather than just what their particular situation is, is that we do, we know what the street pricing, I mean, they might bring us what the, you know, what they would put out on the book menu. I think we need to know that. Maybe you do that all the time, John. I don't know. I mean, because that, that to me is key, and to Supervisor Serna's point, where they don't get a, you know, two bites at the apple, because, you know, everybody's kind of rising together, and we have this cap that would allow them to rise on top of that, and then we have other conditions that may cut into their profitability. It would seem to me, then, that we need to really take the temperature fairly frequently, although these contracts are for a period of time, that, you know, things can fluctuate. And I think if you're anticipating certain costs and already known costs, so I would be comfortable, and then you would, with your report back, so that we know that. And then, you know, and if it gets out of whack, I guess we're gonna, you know, we'll have another conversation. But I would be prepared to support this today, allow you to go to negotiations to see what that brings, and-
And then work back with the CEO.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I have to say, I, I actually agree with staff recommendation. I think that for the reasons that John stated, a cap isn't a good idea when it comes to negotiations. I don't see there's any reason to tie his or his staff's hands at this point. I, it's, it's in the airport's best interest to get the best deal we can possibly get for the consumer. If, if, if the prices are gouged, as has been used, we're gonna lose vendors and we're gonna lose customers. So, you know, I'm willing to support staff recommendation and make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Serna voting no.
Thank you very much.
That screen not working?
Oh, sorry.
When would we anticipate a report back, if I could ask?
John? Report back by? I, I would be hopeful that we would have something back to you within a 90-day period or sooner.
Before you retire?
Yes, I'll have it back before I retire. How's that?
Can you leave this for the next person?
There's the guarantee.
Before he goes, he'll make a report back.
And that can determine if you say good things or bad things about him.
Okay. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, where were we?
You were asking if any of the supervisors had any items to pull.
Okay. So, I think that leaves me, and I am recusing from item 13 to potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
So, use a motion on consent?
We have some speakers.
Minus, well, minus 10 and 11, which we'll hear after this.
So, move.
So, that was Natoli and Kennedy. Okay. Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that on item 13, Supervisor Peters is recusing.
Okay. Would you call items 10 and 11 together, please?
Okay. Item 10, authority to enter into an agreement with the Sacramento Self-Help Housing for $850,000 for operation of the Full Service Rehousing Shelter Program for homeless individuals, and an agreement for $475,000 to provide rehousing services for participants of the Full Service Rehousing Shelter Program for a total amount of $1,325,000 effective February 1 through June 30, 2018. Item 11, authority to execute pulled authority contracts with all qualified agencies for intensive case management services and property-related tenant services for the administration of the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program for a total amount of $5,092,500.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Chair Peters, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Howard Lawrence, and I'm a representative of Sacramento area congregations together, Sacramento Act, which is a multi-faith, multi-ethnic grassroots community organizing institution here in Sacramento. We're often come down here to challenge you on what you're about to do. Today, I'm here in a little different role. I'm here to express our gratitude for you putting this matter on the agenda. We think that while this is not the original vision of the Full Service Rehousing Shelter, what is being brought to you for action today represents some of the best practices in tackling the issue of homelessness that exists in the country. We want to thank the staff from Sacramento County for working so hard on this. Really, I wanted to speak, I was hoping to stay on the consent agenda item. I didn't mean to get it pulled, but it did, there is a letter in your packet from us expressing our full position on this, and I just wanted to go on the record by saying, "Thank you," and thanks to the staff for going forward with this.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you.
We have three requests on off-agenda. Erin Johansson, then Sunny Colette, and Diana White. Are you here? Oh, I'm, you know what? I'm sorry, we need to vote on items 10 and 11 first. You have a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Thank you. Please vote. Okay. Now you can.
Unanimous vote.
Erin?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors, and thank you for getting us on the agenda so quickly. Appreciate that very much. And I'm the Executive Director at TLCS, and we are one of your partners in providing mental health services here in Sacramento County. And for, we really value our partnership with the Division of Behavioral Health Services and also with the county. And as most of you are probably aware, social workers in the community mental health system do this work because we're passionate about it, because we care about the people that we serve. But as we have gone many, many, many years without a cost of living increase for, for contractors and in, or true cost of living increase for contractors, we are finding it more and more difficult to provide the services that we are contracted to serve. Retention and recruitment of our staff is becoming crisis level. The, at TLCS, we're a full-service partnership. We provide services to people who are chronically homeless and seriously mentally ill. Our staff are facing pressure on their own housing, because their wages are so low that when, when their rents go up, they're unable to keep pace with that. The situation is becoming dire. And it has been said that the county doesn't set our, the pricing, that the salary scales for the contractors, and that's in fact true. However, we have very stringent, prescripted contracts that, that require that we have certain staffing levels, and when we attempt to stay within those guidelines, we are unable to do anything about the salary scales that we're, that, that we have. Costs go up. We're running businesses. I think all of you understand what it's like to run a business. We can't go to the landlord and say, "We're not gonna pay the rent increase," or the utilities increases, or any, or health insurance, just to name a few. Those have to take precedence over our ability to, to raise the salary scale. So, what often happens is that we don't bill down our whole contract by the end of the contract period, which would look like maybe we don't need the money, but we're unable to bill down the contract because we're unable to get adequate supply of qualified staff. So, what we are asking you today is to consider in your budget year a cost of living increase for contractors and a mechanism in the future to tie that, our contracts to some standardized method, such as the Social Security Consumer Price Index, something, so that we are not coming to you every year with, you know, begging for dollars, because it's a bit how the situation has been set up. So, we're hoping that you will consider this request and consider our staff, which are members of the community living here, taxpayers in Sacramento County, and rising minimum wage, various other pressures that we have.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Pardon? I'm, thank you very much.
And I do have a question for you from Supervisor Kennedy.
No, I have a question, I have a comment more than anything, and that, so this issue's come up the last couple of budget cycles, and I don't think it's gotten the time and attention that it deserves, and I'm acutely aware of it, being a member of the Mental Health Board. We talk about this issue a lot. It's not about just workers wanting a pay increase, it's about the ability to recruit and retain qualified people. And as you said, you know, you're not even being able to complete the work that we have contracted you to do because of this, and it's becoming a real dire situation. So, I would like to request, respectfully request of the Chair and the CEO that we have an informational item sometime prior to the budget, so that we're not doing this in the fast and furious budget cycle, so that we deeply understand what the impacts would be and what the, what the issues are as an informational item before the full board.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just echo those comments. I know I've met with some of the contractors, but I guess I would just say, I consider them community partners. When I look at the agenda items at 10 and 11, for example, those are nonprofits, they're community partners that we work directly with, along with our county staff, obviously, to carry out a variety of initiatives that are important to people of this county and these communities, the communities we serve. And so, I guess I would ask the same, that we need to have some focus on this. Obviously, in the worst of times, a lot of those contracts were, you know, modified or reduced, or in some cases eliminated, but as we begin to build back some of our social service network, it's important to recognize that folks that are our partners that help us carry out a lot of the initiatives that we believe are important to serve people, that they too have some needs, and I think that gets kind of lost in the overall consideration. It may, you know, certainly rise to some level of discussion, but by the time it gets to us in June, obviously, it's, it's a little late in the process. So, I would concur with Supervisor Kennedy that we have more, maybe just the information, we actually have a workshop around this, because I think it could present itself a crisis for things that we want to accomplish on behalf of the people we serve, along with those that provide the services, so.
Thank you. Sunny Colette? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Colette.
Hi, Sarah. Sarah, okay.
Yeah.
Looks like an eye.
Bad handwriting.
All right, go ahead.
All right. I am a third-generation Sacramento County resident. I proudly work as a mental health professional at one of the county-contracted mental health providers. I love serving the community that I grew up in, and I'm now raising my own family in, and feel passionate about providers collaborating with the county to provide quality services to members of the Sacramento County Mental Health Plan. Providers are currently stretched too thin. We are, we are having a difficult time retraining, retaining, and recruiting staff as our salaries are not competitive. Additionally, many programs have no caps, so we keep acquiring more clients with not enough resources to support them. As our economy improves, we are losing our staff, from our psychiatrists to our paraprofessionals to both private and public entities that offer far more competitive salary and benefit packages. Community mental health care is no doubt a calling, and all of us in this field understand this. We did not go into this sector to get wealthy. However, we are asked, we are asking seasoned, experienced staff to do difficult work on often entry-level pay. It is not uncommon for our employees to have their own children on Medi-Cal. We have staff that help our clients rise out of homelessness and find housing by day when they and their family go home to living in a garage at night, because they cannot afford the skyrocketing rent in this county. And that's a true story of one of the staff that I work with. When I was in graduate school, I did my training at a community mental health clinic. At that time, I observed the paradox that our community mental health clients often have the greatest and most complicated clinical and case management needs. However, the system is not set up or budgeted to retain the most experienced and skilled staff. In our wonderful community, despite pay below what is customary for commiserate experience, education, and training, our mental health plan has continued to employ dedicated professionals and paraprofessionals that are committed to public service. With this said, I believe we are- With this said, I believe we are now at a breaking point. While our staff feel a sense of duty and obligation to our clients and our communities, we must take care of our own families. If conditions don't change, the contractors will continue to have retention and recruiting difficulties to the detriment of the beneficiaries of the mental health plan. As we all know, when our most vulnerable are not getting quality care, this has significant implications for the community at large. Without hesitation, I can assure you that county-contracted mental health providers play an indispensable role in our community. Every day, I encounter people who are impacted in positive ways through these services. Hospitalizations and jail stays are reduced, people's lives are saved, people become employed, people gain sobriety, and people recover from longstanding mental health symptoms so they can lead meaningful lives. I respectfully ask that you keep this in mind as you consider the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana White.
Hello, thank you for your willingness to take my comments today. I'm here representing the Association of Behavioral Health Contractors.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm Diana White with Turning Point, and I'm here for the Association of Behavioral Health Contractors. I have had the privilege of working in the local mental health community here for the past 25 years. I've gotten the opportunity to work in both the children's and the adult system of care. I've had the privilege of serving some of the most vulnerable children, families, and adults in the Sacramento area, and they have all taught me so much about resilience, compassion, and the strength of the human spirit. I provided treatment and advocated for their needs, and always strive to give them as much as they give me, they gave me back. Today, I advocate for the employees who serve those childrens, families, and individuals, and I advocate for employees at risk of actively losing their own housing as they help their clients to find housing. I feel we've come to a crisis point in our behavioral health system. Services now suffer from unprecedented turnover as employees leave community mental health because they can't support their families, or take on second jobs to make ends meet. As providers, we're committed to being a less expensive alternative to service delivery. We've been directed to serve more people in our contracts without any dollars to do so. I ask that you please consider a cost adjustment for providers that goes directly to employees and not the expansion of services, and I further ask that a system be put in place to review provider expenses and provide adjustment before services are negatively impacted in the future. I think that we have seen expenses wind up more than they need to because of the constant efforts at retaining and recruiting our staff, and that affects what's left for the programs. And we want that money to be able to provide excellent, cost-effective, state-of-the-art services, we are committed to that, and we hope that you'll help us in that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Gill, you'll come back to us.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Next item, please.
Now you're on to presentations. Item 27 is the Employee Giving Campaign Report Back.
Good morning, Connie Ahmed with Department of Revenue Recovery. Woo-hoo, I'm back. We have a presentation here for you, just to give you some of the highlights of the campaign. This year's campaign, the slogan was Sacramento County Opens Hearts. Employees really, really stepped up this year. Not only do they serve the public in their day-to-day jobs, they've also opened up their hearts and their pocketbooks to help many organizations here in the community. I'd like to take just a moment to thank some of the members of this year's committee. We had several people work really, really hard to put the campaign together this year to implement some changes that helped increase the amount that employees contributed. We replaced the legacy system that had been used in the past, allowing staff to use debit and credit cards, which they weren't able to before. I know there was a concern expressed about, well, we hope doing away with paper doesn't reduce contributions, and in fact, it has helped increase contributions quite a bit. We set a goal of $300,000 this year and far exceeded that with contributions totaling We had the D-Tex Annual Golf Tournament. They raised quite a bit of money, and I think that was more than last year, if I recall seeing the figures, so great job to Rami and all the staff that helped with that as well. We had also increased participation. One of the county charities, we highlight a little bit more, the internal charities here in Team. Last year, we raised a little over $7,000, this year $14,000, so doubled the contributions in some of the internal charities that the county participates in or that the county provides services to. We see here our tier winners. We had the same departments leading in the Tier One, the larger departments, the County Clerk Recorder and County Council. County Clerk Recorder edged out County Council this year, so going to keep that friendly competition going and see what happens next year. Tier Two, we can see the Public Defender again topped that tier, and with quite a bit of an increase, $7,000 more than last year. And then Tier Three are the largest departments, so we can see the Sheriff and DHA, they swapped places this year, but I'm really very, very proud and want to extend a huge, huge amount of gratitude and thanks to all the employees who really reached in and see what's happening out in the community, and opening their hearts and making those contributions. So with that, I will conclude my remarks and take any questions, if you have any questions.
Mr. Serna.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to thank you for your hard work, and everyone that's been part of the various events that contributed to another successful year of the Employee Giving Campaign. This year, I had a chance to participate with some of our Clerk of the Board staff in the 5K Walk, and it was really not just a great event in terms of its success, hitting a fundraising mark, but you can tell it was palpable that during the course of the walk, various departments, within departments and between departments, there's a lot of county pride that's expressed in the course of those events, and it was the first time that I had participated in that particular event, but I just want to say thanks to you, thanks to all the employees that were part of these events, and it really is an amazing example of what this, one of this county's greatest, you know, largest employers can do, and it really does mean a lot to this board, means a lot to me, that our workforce has such a big heart and is willing to invest what they do to help others, so thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you. And woo-hoo.
Woo-hoo, thanks.
Good job, Connie, thank you very much.
Okay, for item 28, you are introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 2.28 to Title Two of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Veterans Advisory Commission and waiving full reading of the ordinance and continuing to February 6th for adoption.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Lake, Deputy County Executive. This recommendation to the board is to create an advisory body to the board and to departments to advise us on various issues related to veterans, and also assist the Department of Human Assistance with its outreach efforts to get veterans' benefits in the hands of those who have earned them. We're asking you to waive the first reading and continue for two weeks to approve it at that point in time. Membership would be one member appointed or nominated per district. The individuals would have to be residents of Sacramento County, and they would have to be veterans in accordance with the Federal Veterans Administration definition of veterans, which includes those who have served in active duty and have been discharged in a status other than dishonorable. So that's the essence of the recommendation before the board.
How often do you see the commission meeting?
I think we would shoot for at least quarterly. We'd kind of depend on the membership and how they would want to establish that in their bylaws, and certainly more frequently if need be.
Will they meet in the county building, or will they be meeting in the public area where we have a lot of veterans? I know the North Highlands Antelope area does, and I would imagine Patrick's district you have a lot, too.
The commission would be staffed by DHA, the Veteran Services Officer, and I think that could be determined on where they would like to meet, and I think putting forward the idea of having them meet in a community setting rather than necessarily a county office is a good idea, and do it in off-hours, I think, would be also prudent.
Okay, we have a couple of questions here. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I'm certainly very supportive of this. I noticed in the board letter, though, the purpose in the discussion section of the board letter is fairly general, and I understand that, you know, when you establish a new advisory body, that's where we start, but has there been any consideration of what other counties are doing in terms of their veterans advisory bodies, and do they do anything, you know, proactive? Do they receive any budget from their Boards of Supervisors to do proactive, you know, engage proactively with the community?
I looked at a couple of counties, what we wrote up was really patterned pretty much after San Joaquin Counties, and some of them do community events with veterans, they sponsor those events, but really, most of it is really advising departments and the board on issues related to veterans, above and beyond just getting the veterans' benefits out. I don't have any clear specifics, but they do, you know, they kind of have a pretty broad charge, and they respond to the board's direction on issues that the board might want them to address. Some of them bring forward an annual plan of things they want to touch base on throughout the course of the year, and I don't know if any of them receive additional funding for that, other than the staffing that's provided, but that would be an option, certainly.
Now, looking at our CEO, Nav, have you given any thought to whether or not there's any, at least in the foreseeable horizon, any budgetary consequence to this yet?
No, not at this point, but I think one of the conversations after we have this commission set is to discuss with them what are the kind of needs, what they see, since it's so new for us to do it, and go from there. I think the space issue that Supervisor Peters brought up, we want to look at that in conversation with Supervisor Natoli. We could look at an option at May term, close to VOA, so all that is for future discussions.
Okay, well, I'd like us all to kind of keep in the back of our mind as we progress towards final adoption of this, and we, you know, find our members to this new commission and they begin their work, we might all want to think about how we might empower those commissioners to be proactive, and if they need some resources, hopefully that conversation can be welcomed by our executive team and then communicated to this board, should it evolve into, you know, a fairly, I'm going to guess, a fairly minor budgetary item, but it would be, I think it would be nice to, you know, whether it's Stand Down, or, you know, any other activity that has an implication or necessarily involves veterans in Sacramento County, it would be, I think, worthwhile to consider, how do we best empower them to do, to carry out their mission and do what's in the best interest of Sacramento County's veterans.
Thank you. Ms. Frost.
Paul, I want to thank you and the staff for working on this and making this possible. I know the veterans that I know in my district and in my walk are really excited about having a real voice and having the county take them serious with that, and so I'm really excited, and I did read a little bit about San Joaquin County. They actually worked with some of the nonprofit organizations in the community, and they created a go-to place for the veterans. They did a whole lot in San Joaquin County, so it'll be great to get some leaders from the veteran community who will step up from each of our districts, and I'm really excited about that. I already have people applying for the position, and so, thank you very much. And there was also some conversation about, some whispers of there might be people who are not veterans who want to serve on the board. I know this is just a beginning, but I just wanted to express my thoughts relating to, I think from the districts, they should be veterans, at very least, and then if there's extra people on the board who, or the commission that are at large, who bring a skill set like, you know, attorneys, or mental health, or whatever, you know, they could possibly not be veterans. These are just some thoughts that I'm thinking about. I know this is just a beginning, and we're starting with five of them, and they'll have all the support of the county behind them, which is a powerhouse, so it'll be exciting to see what they do with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Natoli.
Do we need to move approval on this, or is this just a reading?
We're still taking comments at the moment. We'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask about, on the construct of those that would be eligible, is there a reason why the National Guard is excluded from, many of the guardsmen have served in combat action, get called, they may operate under one of the branches of the military, I'm not sure how all that works.
We use the definition of veteran in the federal, that the federal government uses, and they include these armed, these branches of the service.
Well, I would like to make sure, somebody take a quick look at that, though, that may be the definition, but I know the National Guards, they don't just do stateside duty. I mean, in fact, with the reductions over time with some of the standing army and so forth, those folks have been called into military action on many occasions, and they serve active duty, and, you know, and it's not just at the beck and call, obviously, of the governor.
But they don't have budgetary authority here, so I think adding the National Guard is fine.
Yeah.
We can make our own definition.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be clear. I don't want to confuse things, I know we have veterans representatives in the audience, too, so I just.
What we could do is, as you, there's a definitional issue, there's a letter we got from a gentleman saying how we're defining it. If we need to make changes as we go through, we can make changes. We strictly took what was in the federal definition of what is considered, what departments they're in, so that was the definition we came up with.
But we can add National Guard.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, and we have one speaker in the audience. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Don Harper.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I have a cold, so I'll make it real short this morning. Good to see everyone this morning. Again, my name is Don Harper. I've been a veteran advocate in Sacramento for over 25 years, past Commander of the Veterans Affiliated Council, and now Senior Vice Commander of that again. Also, founder of the Sacramento Stand Down, back in 1992, I founded the Stand Down, helping homeless veterans since about 20, about 25 years ago, 26 years ago. I'm also a commander of American Legion post in Carmichael, legislative post. Anyhow, having said all that, I'm here simply to say, to show strong support for the commission, want to thank Supervisor Sue Frost for bringing it forward, and the body, of course, to take a look at this. I think the commission is important, it's long overdue. You have over 80, close to 80,000 veterans here in Sacramento County, they have a lot of needs, some needs are being met, many needs are not being met. I think this commission could be a platform and a vehicle for veterans that don't join organizations like I'm a part of, but willing to, can come forward to hearings and tell their stories about what's being done with them, or what's not being done with them, what their unmet needs are, where they might not come to an organizational such as the groups I represent. So I think it's a long overdue, it's a great commission needs, and also mainly to be a voice for many of the veterans you talked about in Sacramento County, there's a lot of them out there, they're too busy going to school, raising families, serving their country, and everything else, but they might have time to come and tell their stories to the commission, so those on the commission can hear and understand exactly what they need, or what's being done, what's being done correctly, and what's not being done correctly. So having said all of that, excuse me, the organizations I talked about, and my personal view, I think this is a great idea, please vote aye on this veteran commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harper.
Thanks, Don.
Ms. Frost.
This is the first step in strengthening the voice of the veterans in Sacramento County, and I'm excited, so I move approval.
I'll second that.
And did you want to add in National Guard?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, yes, please.
I'll make that change.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 29, consideration of 2018 federal and state legislative priorities.
Hi, good morning, Chair and members of the board. Natasha Drenge, Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer. As Ms. Evans said, these are the proposed 2018 federal and state legislative priorities. As in previous years, they remain largely unchanged, though there are some substantive changes, and those are included in Attachment 1, and also outlined in your board letter. And Attachment 2 is a clean version of these proposed changes, of which I'm recommending you approve today. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Serna?
Great, thank you. I just wanted to express my thanks to our CEO and to our staff for hearing the additional, my concerns about the need for additional language that expresses explicitly our intent to continue working with the Federal Aviation Administration as it relates to minimizing impacts from airports on our surrounding communities. Thank you.
Hey, any other comments? Oh, you're getting away easy today. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Frost?
Not so fast.
Maybe.
I want to thank you for this. I was in agreement with almost everything. I did have one item on page eight, items C1, and C2, and D1.
Are you looking at the red line?
What page?
I'm looking at the clean version on page eight regarding transportation specifically.
And can you repeat them again for me? I just got to that page.
Items C1, and C2, and D1. And specifically, the wording in these three items talks about supporting increased funding, and I, in my first year, in my last year, those words, "supporting increased funding," are the, seem to be the county's rationale for supporting tax increases, and so, or tax initiatives throughout the year. And there have been times when the county supported tax initiatives, and I would get calls at my office saying, "Why did you support that?" when I didn't even, I didn't necessarily know about it, and it's possible, didn't understand the process. My request is that, and specifically around, you know, SB 1, that was one of the tax initiatives, my request is that we add some wording that says that the county supports increased funding, and adding the words "without raising taxes," so that the county's focus isn't just on, you know, our first thought isn't to go back to the taxpayers for our increased funding, but to lobby our legislature to redirect their priorities, and lobby for, you know, our needs for them changing priorities to redirect funds, you know, that will help us at our local level.
Motion, Ms. Frost?
So, I'd like to make a motion to amend those three items to reflect adding the words "without raising taxes."
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, and so, in view of that, I'd like to go on record as opposing those three items and supporting the entire rest of the document.
Okay, now I have two more speakers. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just a question, because it goes back maybe to process. Certainly, when we have general statements, to Ms. Frost's point, but there are other elements from a policy perspective here. This is to offer guidance to our staff and to our legislative advocates and others, certainly board members that may represent the board in a particular forum as it relates to the county's position on matters. I guess I would ask that when it comes to, because we have guidelines, whether either ballot measures and/or initiatives, and some of those might involve impacts to the county, and we have a whole process for how those are vetted. When it comes to tax measures, particularly if I mean raising taxes and so forth, I think it's been more to the point that was made with the previous comments by Supervisor Frost, there are, you know, different ways of deriving funding and, you know, supporting that. And so, I guess, maybe just to ask you, Natasha, recognizing that at any given time, there may be difference of opinion amongst board members as it relates to a particular measure or specifics of that, how is it that then you derive that? So, is it, when it says support, then that means whether it's taxes, fees, licensing, redirecting priorities? Do you take that as being all encompassing, or is there a finer text to that, or texture to that when it comes to measures that, you know, there was example user, but there could be other examples in the future? So, I guess I'm.
Yeah, so I can speak directly to our work in the last year related to SB 1 funding. We came to you last year and added on page 15 of the Attachment 2. You'll see, we added, again, this was approved last year, Statement Number 1, which is "Support Additional Funding" in anticipation that SB 1 would continue to move forward, which we did anticipate would have the gas tax increase. So, in that way, we, once that was approved, we supported SB 1. With regards to other proposals, we, I haven't been faced with that. This is the first of which it's been raised as a concern. So, if there are other ways that we can further put a finer point on this that you approve, we could certainly do that.
Thanks Supervisor Natoli, the finer point on that. For all these years, if there's something that state legislature is doing that's going to harm our financials, we absolutely take a position against it. If they come up with something that's going to enhance it, and if there's taxes in consideration, our general direction, that we know that the board is split, but we take the direction that the board's interest will be, to see if we can get more revenue to come in. And in the past, Supervisor McGlashan was very clear that that's not where she wanted to be, but we had an understanding from the board, that the majority of the board was okay with us pursuing that. So, that's sort of the guidance that we take from it, and if the board is in a different position, I think we do communicate back and forth. One of the things that Supervisor Frost asked for is that when we're sending out our letters out in support or opposition, is to keep your all's offices closer, which we plan on doing. We're going to send them out simultaneously, and as we get feedback that the board's getting in a different position, it would be incumbent upon us to come back and pose a question back to you, that this is what we believe you, we understand that your position is. If that has changed, then let's have that discussion, bring it back here.
Okay.
Could I ask you where we are on bail reform? Do we have policy that would affect that discussion?
We do not currently have policies in the platform that addresses that specifically. I understand your CCP is discussing this. We could come back to you with an addition if you would like us to examine that.
I think we should hear it. We have letters from a number of judges and others that want us to come out against it, so I think we'd like to hear it.
Yeah, our folks have finished the work. Once they do, we'll come back to you.
Okay. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. I'm going to move adoption of the 2018 federal and state legislative priorities, but to the point that Supervisor Natoli was making, I think the way that the priorities around funding, you know, seeking increased funding for transportation projects or any infrastructure, quite frankly, is written in a way that certainly makes me comfortable. And I just want to point out, too, that leaving the word "funding" as kind of the operative gerund in the both sentences, or both paragraphs here, really could mean a whole variety of things. It could mean grant funding, correct me if I'm wrong, right?
That's correct.
So, to me, leaving it as general as it is, I think is wise, given the fact that we can't predict in any given year or set of years whether or not there's going to be a tax, or there's going to be a new federal transportation grant that's made available. Maybe it's very infrequently, but I think having it written the way it is is clear enough for the public to understand what our priorities are, and general enough so that we understand that we, you know, there's a lot of flexibility in terms of what we're pursuing and how that reflects the intent that's memorialized in the priority set.
I'll second that, because he used the word "gerund."
We have a few more speakers. Ms. Frost?
So, I just want to add a little comment relating to that. In my view, the words "support increased funding" in this document is giving staff the ability to, carte blanche ability to take decisions on behalf of the board without us having an opportunity to go on record as to whether or not we support that. And my understanding is that this is a document that is used for guidance for our legislative staff, and I get that. I do support funding for our roads. This isn't about not supporting funding. I'd like to see the legislature redirect 64 billion that's going to the bullet train to fix our roads. It could solve the problem in one day, and we could have our roads fixed. But what I have a problem with is the fact that my communities with, who have low income and fixed income are the ones that are more intensely impacted by these tax increases. And so, I don't feel we should take that lightly. I think we should be concerned about that, and our legislature should be concerned about that, and we should be holding a line and asking our legislature to do better by us. And so, I just wanted you to know, this is not about me not wanting funding for our roads. I want funding for the roads. I just want it to come from somewhere else than my constituents. And so, and I also want to be able to go on record. So, that being said, I think this, because this is the way the county does it, I'm going on record as not being that person who supports, you know, in general, casually tax increases. I like to be able to think through it thoughtfully and go on record as to how I'm representing my constituency. But I think for the purposes of today's meeting, since we don't, clearly my suggestion was not adopted, then I'll just go on record. But I wanted, I wanted the staff to understand that, and I wanted to go out on record publicly so that people understand where I'm coming from. I really want the roads fixed. I just want the money to come from somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just for a couple of other items I wanted to ask about, on page seven, and this kind of goes to being reactive versus proactive, and in the middle of page under, and this is on the, I guess, the blue line section, or maybe, no, it's the clean section, I'm sorry, it's under E1, Extended Producer Responsibility.
On page?
Page seven.
Of the red lines?
Of the red lines?
No, I think it's the clean version.
The clean version?
Clean version, clean version, clean version.
Which number is it? I'm sorry.
Page seven, Extended Producer Responsibility, middle of page.
E1, yeah.
A couple of years ago, we had some discussion regarding this, but I know more and more, particularly as it relates to pharmaceuticals, but also with the recycling industry, and I think some of the diminishment in the marketplace, I know that from the standpoint of solid waste collection and recycling, that obviously both, some of our contractors, but I think the community may have some added burdens if we aren't able to find some ways to, you know, both locally, but certainly working in a statewide effort, and maybe even nationally. So, I guess I would ask on this one, with regards to pharmaceuticals, too, the opioid epidemic, and I just think the, you know, the responsibility for those that dispense and disperse and sell, to now have take backs, and there's been some modest inroads, but I guess, Natasha, for purposes, is this strong enough? And again, this, these are kind of reactive versus proactive. We don't say we're going to take on any legislation. And I know in years past, going back probably a number of years ago, we talked about legislation that we might actually get behind and ask folks to introduce. And that's an area that I'd like to have us have some conversation around, and maybe you could, you know, shed some light. Again, I haven't been that close to it, so maybe there are already things that have worked. We're working with authors. We're familiar with legislation, either anticipated or already introduced.
I'm not currently actively working on any proposals, but we have discussed this in the past with department staff and their desire to support take-back programs of pharmaceuticals. And I do think that this statement would allow us to do that, to engage in those conversations.
Okay, and I guess I would take that just a little bit further. As I was saying, though, that I would like us have, take a look at it, and I don't know if there's other board members who'd be of like mind. Again, when it comes to a lot of the conversation going on relative to particularly pharmaceutical, you know, take backs, but the whole change in the recycling industry as it relates to markets and, you know, and ability for us to, in the secondary markets, to, you know, dispose or sell, or at least off those materials, I think it certainly, you know, it doesn't bode well, at least the current picture. And so, maybe it's an item, Madam Chair, we could come back and have some discussion around specifically. And the other item I wanted to raise is just right below that, when it comes to healthcare reform, Patient Protection, Affordable Care Act, and it's not so much as relates to ACA, but I don't see anything, and if you can direct me to it, then fine. But I want to register a continued concern about correctional healthcare costs that are borne by counties. And, you know, we talk about working through CSAC when that's come up in the past, and, you know, we're going to talk about a reorganization here in a moment that may get at some of our, you know, local aspects to that. But it would seem to me that we got to have some positions, and maybe we got to, you know, we got to be on the forefront, working with either counties or county coalition of some sorts, because that is a shifted responsibility, and you can say it's an unfunded mandate, but, you know, the state got pretty tricky and clever about how they were able to, you know, get around some of that. But from my view, this is going to be a continual drain on local entities, and when we talk about roads or about any other community priorities, our ability to have general fund capacity and discretionary capacity, as well as the realignment, is, I think, going to be hampered and limited, if not terribly impacted by rising costs in that particular arena. And we don't have any statement that relates to legislation and/or, or if we do, tell me what's that, Natasha.
No, I think we could be more specific. We don't, we don't have a specific statement on correctional.
So, could you do a bring back on that?
Let me check the state policies really quick. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I think we have a general statement, but we could be more specific.
Yeah, because I would say don't oppose shifted costs and all that, but I think we need to get pretty specific about. I get, that's what I would advocate for, so those are two points I wanted to make, so. Thanks.
Any additional comments? And how long will it be before you bring the bail item back?
I don't have a date specific, but I will communicate back. I don't know what their date they're finishing, do you?
I don't know the date either. I think we should check in with that group and see where their discussions are, and then we can report back.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the floor. Was there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And Supervisor Frost was voting, accepting the items on.
With the exception of those that I mentioned. Do you know which ones?
Yes, let me go to my notes. Page eight, that was C1, C2, D1?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor, did you also want to add in the state, those are the federal transportation policies. There's also a state.
State and federal, please.
So, for the state, if I can just identify that for you.
Yes, thank you, Natasha.
That's on page 15, item R1.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were waiting for something. My apologies. So, we're going to take two separate motions, correct? This first one is with the exception of those items, and then we'll come back and do another motion with the balance?
If that would make you happy, I don't know.
I think it would be cleaner.
Repeat that, please?
We're going, you're doing a motion with the exception, Frost is going to vote approving the item with the exceptions of C1, C2, and D1 on page eight.
We don't need two.
No, I think, just for the record, just note her objection to that section.
Yeah.
Okay. Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 30 is the Introducing an Ordinance Amending Various Sections of the Sacramento County Code Authorizing the Department of Personnel Services to Process a Salary Resolution Amendment and Delegating Contracting Authority and Waiving Full Reading and Continuing to February 6 for Adoption.
Mr. Lake, you're back.
Good morning again. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Lake, W. County
Good morning again. Ma'am Chair, members of the board, Paul Lake, deputy county executive for Social Services. Before I begin, I want to thank a number of people who've spent a lot of time working on this, including Sherri Heller, Director of Health and Human Services, and her staff, her budget staff, and Michelle K., us, and others. Dave Devine from Personnel Services, Aaron Brewer with Correctional Health, Marie Wood from EMD, Ann Edwards, DHA, also Jeff Gassaway from General Services, because we've had to look at a lot of facilities issues, and Robert Bonner from, who's been meeting with labor organizations. And in particular, I want to thank Jeff King from our office, who's done the bulk of the technical work on this, to bring this set of recommendations forward. So, thank you, Jeff. Just have a couple of quick slides. I want to point out the current structure that involves Health and Human Services, as well as Correctional Health. Currently, you see on the left side of this slide, all of the programs that are within the current Department of Health and Human Services. And on the right, you'll see that Correctional Health is a program within the Sheriff's Department. And what we are proposing here is to split the Department of Health and Human Services into two departments. One would be the Department of Health Services, which includes those health-related functions that are currently in DHHS, including behavioral health, primary health, public health, juvenile medical. And we're also proposing to pull the Correctional Health from the Sheriff's, out of the Sheriff's Department, and putting it into this new department. And we're also recommending the creation of a second department, which will include all those protective services programs that are in, currently in DHHS, which would include CPS, Children's Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, as well as the IHSS Provider Payments that are in DHHS. And the public authority, although it's an independent authority, the staff is located within DHHS, so they would now be in the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. Want to clarify a couple of things on the ordinances. We had a late change that was sent to you last evening. There was an error in the earlier version of the ordinance that placed the California Children's Services Program into the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. That's actually a health program. So, the change puts it into the Department of Health Services. And there were a couple of places in the ordinance, we realized we had transposed child and family in the new Child, Family, and Adult Services, and we wanted to make sure that that was correct. The essential reason for making this change is since, in the early 90s, we had a Department of Social Services, and we had a Department of Health. And we did a significant restructuring. We took the protective service programs, merged them with those health department programs into what is now DHHS. And then, the remaining public assistance programs that were in Social Services became the Department of Human Assistance. Since that time, as noted in the staff report, there's been a significant growth, not only in budget and in FTEs in DHHS, but a significant increase in the complexity of the programs within that department. And what we're recommending now is to create these two departments that can better hone in the specific missions that are represented in protective service programs and represented in the health programs. We think by creating two different departments, it will allow the department head and the staff in those departments to really hone in on what those specific missions are, rather than the significant span of focus that exists right now. We did provide some information in the staff report. We kind of looked at some other counties to see, you know, how do other counties set themselves up, not necessarily because we have to do what other counties do, but to give us a sense of, are we often are thinking on this complexity. And in fact, if you look at the 20 largest counties in the state of California, only Sacramento has set up the way it is, where it merges the protective service programs with the health programs, and has a separate public assistance program. Four of the 10 largest, and four, in fact, 14 of the 20 largest, combine its protective services with public assistance, which is the way we used to have it 25 years ago. We're not recommending that, because that would make a very large department, well over 3,000 staff. And again, that focus on mission, we would not accomplish what we want to accomplish there. And a few of the larger counties, four of those top 10, Orange, Riverside, Contra Costa, and Fresno, are structured as we're proposing here. And only Solano County of the top 20 is the only county that actually merges all of them in one really big department. They're a smaller county. The cost related to this directly is $542,000 annually. That's for three new positions, the Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services, the Deputy Director for Admin and Budget under that new department, and an Executive Secretary for the Department Head. And there will also be some additional costs for facilities for moving Correctional Health out of the Sheriff's Department. And those facility costs would no longer be absorbed by the Sheriff, so we need a little additional funding for that. All other costs related to the shifts and staff are being, will be taken care of by shifting realignment and other general fund support between the two departments, to otherwise make it a cost neutral change, other than that $542,000. So, with that, that's kind of an overview of what we're proposing, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Paul, I know I had a chance to talk with Nav yesterday about this in briefing, but one of the things that is a little bit, I guess, concerning to me is that in doing all this, recognizing certainly that anytime you're going to do a shift, that you may undertake costs. But I guess, when I look at a half a million dollars annually that is going to be added cost, we're going to have a restructured departmental layout. And I guess, based on the promise that hopefully we're going to find some efficiencies. And so, I guess, if you could take a moment, you, or Nav, or somebody, and kind of prospectively talk about what you think may come of this. Because beyond, you know, the service delivery and, you know, the umbrella of which departments fall, and how it's structured, and how other counties do, and so forth, when I think about a half a million dollars, and again, you've spent many hours in these chambers, along with many of the folks that are here today, when, you know, we were looking for a nickel to try to keep programs alive, and now we're basically going to restructure at the upper levels. And again, this is no mystery. It comes obviously with, you know, the county executive having, you know, indicated this has been something that we're going to undertake last year. But when I see that, and, you know, I hear realignment, discretionary funding and so forth, that that's going to be another half a million dollars, it has to get budgeted for in order to have additional support staff, to get, you know, additional directorships and deputy director for support and so forth. I guess, what I'd like to know is that, out of all this, from either from a customer service perspective, and those that we serve, whether they be children, families, frail adults, others in the various behavioral health and health systems. So, what beyond size and size of budget and span of control, what is hoped that we're going to get out of this that may either offset what's going to cost us, but secondly, may either provide better efficiencies, better oversight? Those things are touched upon very, you know, lightly in the report. So, again, with your expertise, I guess I'd ask that question of you or Nav, but certainly you.
Sure, I'll respond to that. You know, we have historically, in hard times, these departments have taken a look at what we had to do to continue to maintain services at the line. And we've done a lot of cutting at the top levels. I think DHA right now is about a 4% management in its department. DHHS is a little larger. So, there's always been a focus on, we need to make sure that services are funded. At some point, you have to take a look at, okay, how are we, how are we keeping a focus on how to make sure that customer service gets better? How do we strategically look at how these programs are being, are being put together, how they're being coordinated? Are we focusing in on making sure that those primary missions are being kept? And with a span of control, and this is kind of Public Administration 101, if you will, with a span of control of the size that we have in DHHS, it's really hard to be strategic focused on those specific areas. And, you know, over time, I think customer service does suffer in some manner. So, what I would anticipate with a more concentrated focus within these two departments, they're going to be able to look more strategically, not only at funding, but they're also going to be able to look more strategically. How are we structured? How are we providing those services? How are we making sure the services work together to maximize effective customer service? I think one of the areas that's going to be at the top of the list for the new Department of Health Services is taking a real hard look at how Correctional Health Services is provided. And are there ways to find efficiencies there, casting no aspersions on any operation currently. But this is going to be an opportunity to bring a health service program into a health services department, where there are people who have that, have that background, expertise in managing health services in general, and take a look at it, give some, give some fresh look at it. So, that's going to be an opportunity, not only to save costs, but are we providing services in the best way possible? So, I really think that increased focus within these two departments on their central mission will ultimately lead to better services.
And Supervisors, I just want to underscore, Paul hit on this, when we're, this proposal is not a negative comment on any county staff or what they've been able to do. This was more, if we were to design this with the scope we have, and trends that are changing, we're going to have more adult, need for more adult protective service. We just had a conversation about Correctional Health. I just want to be very clear that this is not, no way should it be read into that there's any lack of faith in folks, what they're doing. This is a span of control. This is what we think, as we focus into it, who can we designate and say, look at these issues for us, and bring your best recommendations that you have.
Just to follow on, and again, it was very current in my mind, because we had people address this this morning off agenda, but for example, behavioral health services, where we have folks that are contractors or community providers that, you know, work side by side with county, is that something that, again, would get a more specific look or consideration because of this? Or is that just going to, I mean, you're going to bring that back in another context. But it's fresh in my mind.
Yeah, it's, it will be. And I'm going to go a little bit on the negative side, but I'm going to use this as an example. 2008, we had an atrocious CPS case. And at that point, our DHHS director, all her energy went, take care of CPS. She had capable assistance that helped her. But you could see, when the cuts came in nine and 10, we were still reeling from the CPS case. And a lot of the decisions that got made, I think could have been a little bit different outcome if you had a more focused outlook on it. The other thing that I've heard consistently is that with span of control that DHHS has, it's a yeoman's task. I mean, Sherri's our fourth director since I've been here, and that's quite a juggling to look at what's up there, and which ones to prioritize, because we end up prioritizing. And somehow, some of those services don't get prioritized. And I'm hoping, or my expectation is with this, is that the Child, Family, and Adult Services will have equal voice, as does on the health side, and vice versa too, so that there's more efficiency. And what I mean efficiency is just not on the fiscal side, but it's more on the management side. There's a concerted effort to look at what the issues we have, and bring you the best recommendations. And again, I say that not in any way saying that we've not done that in the past. I want to enhance it more than subtract.
And if I could follow up on your question as well, you know, when you think about our budget process, and DHHS is looking at all the needs it has, and it may bring a list that's substantially long of, you know, here's things we need. And, you know, that type of example that you mentioned around the colas for the providers, may fall below some of the needs of CPS, may fall below the needs of IHSS. And so, it's further down a list that that department head provides. And we focus kind of, okay, let's look at your top priorities. Well, now you're going to have a department that may rise, obviously it's a smaller department, now you've got to deal with two lists. But you're going to get more of a detailed discussion of what those health needs are, that doesn't get kind of lost in the discussion of a larger department like that.
Just one, if I could just, yeah, I just want, just one follow on question. So, as you look at efficiencies or effectiveness, then I think one of the things I would, I would hope that if you're going to bring this focus to bear, that, and again, I would like to have some response from either you, Paul, or Nav on this, or others, is that, you know, in years past, particularly when we were in some of the, you know, darker times, but even as we come out, we talk about, you know, kind of getting out of the silos, as it relates to recognizing that investments in certain areas do pay dividends either by avoidance and/or by better outcomes generally. And I'll, you know, just use an example that comes to mind, that if you have, you know, healthy families that have, you know, access to certain treatment and/or health services, that, you know, may allow them to, early on, to address some issues, then you don't end up either with more medical care, or with folks in foster care necessarily, or broken families. And so, and, you know, part of the discussion goes even to the law enforcement side of that, that if you're able to do some of that, then hopefully you avoid folks, you know, entering jail if you do things that, you know, allow them to address other issues in their life. So, can you help me understand how this reorganization, if it will at all, how it's going to help us to have a breakdown of some of those, you know, and I use the word silo, but I mean, you know, basically people's responsibilities, they stay focused on that, either in this large department, or generally in the county regiment of services, or lineup of services, and that, you know, if I get my funding, fine, I do what I need to do. But, you know, does that have an improved effect for those that we serve, and for the quality of life in the county? So, I'd like to have a little understanding about that.
Sure. I guess my thoughts on that, you know, in any large bureaucracy, the risk of creating siloed management of programs is very significant. And it's incumbent on the leaders of the organization to make sure that that doesn't occur. I don't think, just by virtue of creating X number of departments, it necessarily creates those silos, as long as you're working, you're paying attention, you're working hard on it. And I think we've seen in the past five to 10 years, some great success in breaking down silos in this organization. We have probation working very closely with CPS. We have public assistance working very closely with our behavioral health programs. Those are all in different departments with different leaders. But the silo management is really incumbent on the people in those positions, and the people above them. It's incumbent on the CEO's office, it's incumbent on me, to make sure that if there are two programs that need to work together to solve a problem, and they're in two different departments, then we have to make sure that happens. And it's going to take some diligence. But I'm confident that it's not necessarily the boxes on the paper that creates that silos, it's the attention that's given by the leadership. And this, I think we've seen some really good success on the leadership of this organization at all levels, to make sure those silos aren't there.
And on that point, the silos did exist in this organization. And to Paul's point, as big as we are, that is a constant management issue we deal with, not only in social services, it happens in municipal services, public works. And I can't emphasize enough with Paul and discussion with department heads, it is incumbent upon my position, Paul's position, department heads, division heads, not to get into the silo mode. And I do believe, I'm pretty bullish, that we've done a lot of work to start breaking those down. For EVABR, as an example, a couple of years ago, we brought different disciplines in the room and said, you guys got to work on this. We gave appropriate level of management in it, not that we're going to micromanage them. But the silo issue, Supervisor Natoli, it's a constant, every day when we walk in here, that we have to work through, because human nature is, you get in, and you're going to do what you're going to do. And not that there's any malintent employees have, but that's a charge they have. But picking the right department heads, picking the right executive, assistant, deputy, that's all incumbent upon us and our employees, to make sure the silos don't, are not created.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank staff for the thought that went into this. I've been asking for this for three years. It's, the department, in my opinion, was unwieldy large, and nobody could be expected to manage it, whether, no matter how talented Mr. Lake and Dr. Heller are. I know that when I first, three years ago, took my tour of departments and met with all the department heads and got briefings, I think it probably took 20 hours of meeting with the HHS, because of the complexity and the varying services. So, I think that this allows us to focus in, as you said, focus on mission. I think that's exactly right. I think that the efficiencies is, as Mr. Gill talked about, go far beyond the efficiencies, fiscal efficiencies, but delivery services efficiencies. Also, the breaking down silos, I'm very hopeful that on the, on the health services side in particular, this will give them more of an opportunity to stay focused, to have a director that's more focused on breaking down those silos, in a number of ways, not just in delivering services, but also in data gathering, sharing of data. I mean, I know that even getting, putting Correctional Health over there, I think is a great idea. It's very difficult to get data out of Correctional Health in the current situation, and that data is critical to our mission. So, I wholeheartedly support this, and think that this will really provide better services for the county residents.
Thank you. Ms. Frost?
I also support this. I did want to ask a question that relates to the employee, unfilled employee positions. I noticed last year, as we were going through the budget process, there's, we appropriate funds for positions, but we can't always put the money to work as quickly as we want to. So, some of those positions actually don't get filled as fast as we hoped, or they never get filled. And so, and sometimes there's an overlap when you have, when you're talking about all these services. So, my question is, how do you? So my question is, how do you rationalize those unfilled positions? And are there, is there overlap or are you dividing, does this, is it a pretty clean divide? Or will there be some positions that overlap into two different departments? And how do you rationalize that? And how do, how will we manage the extra unfilled positions? That, are those managed annually in the budget? Or how do we rationalize that in the budget? Is that just money that's set aside and it doesn't get spent until those positions get filled? Or how does that work?
Let me, let me see if I can answer your questions. When, when we were going through, especially, you know, the, the central support of DHHS, we knew we needed to divide that group of people. Some of them have to go to child, family, adult services, some of them have to go with health services. So we looked at the, the positions that have been approved and which positions make sense. So, so it's, it's pretty clean, clean break there in terms of who gets assigned to what department. Some of those positions are vacant and it's going to be the responsibility of the directors of those departments, you know, do we need to fill them? Do we need to keep them? What's going to be our recommendation in the next, in the next budget cycle with regard to those? I certainly wouldn't anticipate getting rid of, getting rid of filled positions. But, you know, again, that focus in on, on the needs of those, those two new departments is going to give more attention to, okay, let's look at those vacant positions. Should we reclassify them? Do we still need them? So that'll be part of the budget process.
Part of the process we go annually is when the budget process kicks off, our analysts do look at the complement of positions each department has filled. And we have a aging report we get on vacancies. So that's when the work starts on the vacancies is that if it's six months and less, it could have been retirement, it could have been some other issues, that is a different level of scrutiny. But once you get into one year and above, there's different reasons why. It could be hard to recruit position, could have been, there's been turnover. And if it's not needed, then the recommendation will be made to come back to the board and delete those positions. But all that work goes in, in spring. And what you see in June is what we come back with your recommendation on the vacancies to.
So on the whole person care initiative, the money that, that, you know, we're, we're, we have an ambitious timeline to put money to work, but we can't get it to work fast enough. But we're hoping, by virtue of dividing this up, that we can put it to work faster and, and pay more attention to different areas. And I'm assuming, I, I don't know, I guess we all have these special things that we want to fund. And I'm trying to look through the budget and figure out where the money is, try to find some money for my little special things. So, and I imagine there could be a lot of money sitting in those vacant positions that are never filled. But they're not just sitting there, you're saying, they're eliminated annually.
We manage our vacancy list fairly closely. Organization our size typically runs about 10% vacancy, but there's all kind of different reasons. The demographics of our workforce, we have more of an aging workforce, folks are retiring. So you'll see folks leaving. The, the concern that the board has expressed in the past, and we watch this very carefully, is that you give us authorization in the budget, start implementing programs, and it takes us some time to get those positions filled. And that's what we're very sensitive to is that if we got the funding in place, why is that we're not getting it operationalized? If the positions are hard to recruit, what do we need to do? So we constantly keep looking at that. Our personnel department works with our departments on that.
Is that about the average 10% vacancy?
It depends on the organizations, but our demographics play a lot into it. And you will see a spike in our vacancy coming up in March. That's traditionally when our employees retire. If you come from a purse agency, they retire in December. So when we come to you in the budget, there's always a higher vacancy because folks have just retired. So those, those variations come in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I don't think you've addressed this based on a question or concern expressed by another board member, so I'm going to ask it. The board letter has a fairly concise, single sentence under measures and evaluations for what amounts to be, you know, fairly significant departure from, from the current organizational structure. So I guess I'd like to know a little bit more because it's, it's not clear from the board letter. How are we going to measure the performance of the restructuring? How are we going to come back in, you know, three months, six months, 12 months and ask the deliberate question, hey, is this, did this restructuring result in better performance measured by X, Y, and Z?
I, I think it's going to be measured in the results of the, the customer service and the programs and the, 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 the response to needs within each of those departments. I don't know that there's going to be any specific piece of data that's going to say, hey, the restructuring was a good idea, or hey, it wasn't. But it's really going to be an assessment on the part of, of the five of you and Mr. Gill on, you know, have we truly improved, improved our focus on mission? Have we improved the, the effectiveness of the strategic and fiscal thinking at the department level? And has that translated into, into better services?
And supervisor, the other work plan that you have, my work plan is an indicator system for the whole county. And as we're going through, each one of these departments is going to have its own performance indicators, which will tell us, are we making an improvement or we're not making an improvement? So that's the other piece that's coming in here.
Is that an initiative that requires deliberation by this board?
I wasn't anticipating. We have our own working indicators we use that makes management issue, management sense to us.
Right.
But we plan on reporting those in the budget so you have an idea, what is it that we're measuring, what we're measuring against. And if the board members have some ideas, you want us to measure something, absolutely. I mean, we're open to any suggestions.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but it did, it did kind of take me aback that this is, you know, fairly significant and there's little verbiage here, there's little explanation from the podium even about the expectations for change in customer service, change in workload by our employees. So I think we need to be a little bit more deliberate about understanding how this is hoping to affect the changes that we all want from both of those perspectives, both from the organizational, employee, management perspective, and also how is this going to better serve the public? So I'd like to suggest that we have a discussion about this during our retreat. I think it's appropriate for this to, to be the subject of some healthy back and forth. And you, and maybe it's for all departments, maybe not just the ones that are subject to the reorg. But I would just like to have a better understanding of how we are measuring success, especially when we're being asked to move forward with some fairly dramatic changes to how this, you know, this organization, which is a large one, is, is restructured.
I think supervisor, I mean, that what we are anticipating to bring back to you is a performance indicator plan for the whole county that we.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. It's, I, we're, I'm struggling with the timeline, but I was more thinking in spring that you have a totality in front of you.
Okay.
You can look at Department A to Z, and you can see what are the indicators that we have that we're using to look at the performance in it.
And that's why I asked the question, is there going to be something before us?
Oh, I misunderstood you.
And you answered, no, there isn't, or you weren't planning on it, but now you're telling me it's something different.
I misunderstood you.
Okay.
No, I wasn't anticipating the board necessity to adopt it. That's what I was reacting to. I was, but we are going to come back to you in a workshop setting and say, as I indicated in my work plan, that these are the kind of indicators, if you pick animal care, you pick DHA, you pick whichever department you pick, you will have a basket of indicators that shows you how are we measuring what we're doing, not just the restructuring, but any aspect of the work we're doing. Some of the indicators you're more well worth in if you're in that area, and some you're not exposed to, but we plan on bringing that back to you to show you what, what those are.
Okay, if I can ask just that you placed a specific emphasis then in that context of what you had intended to bring back to us, kind of the measures that you see that are applicable here based on this, based on this change. So that's, that's generally my first comment. My second comment or question, I guess, is, was since this is going to, you know, thematically kind of concentrate a focus on children, in my estimation, in addition to family and adult services. Was there any consultation with first five? Or any brainstorming with first five about how there might be, you know, whether or not there's a, a different role for first five to, to play as it relates to the child, family, adult services?
Uh, no, there wasn't, not in the discussion of creating these new departments. But that's another area where this new department head can say, hey, here's an area that maybe we need to pay some more attention to and have those kind of conversations. I think that's a demonstrative example of, of the benefit of creating a department that's strictly focused in on those kinds of issues with children.
Precisely what I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Yes.
We will, we'll add first five.
That was a leading question.
Thank you for.
Well, you are on the stand.
We'll add first five in our group on this to have a discussion.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any further questions? I don't have anyone from the public signed up to speak, so.
Please vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Item 31 is the cents per ton funding allocation program. Adopt resolution to approve a cents per ton allocation program for the collection, administration, and use of funds from mining operators for the purpose of enhancing open space and connectivity improvements in the consumers area.
Good morning. I'm Surrender Singh, principal planner with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item. Starting with an overview, the request before your board today is the adoption of a resolution to approve the mining cents per ton allocation program. And the program would apply to mining projects either located or proposed within the construction material market equalizer area, which is the gray area that you see on this exhibit. And that area is generally bounded by Highway 50, El Dorado County line, San Joaquin County line, and also Highway 99. With additional background here, development agreements have been approved for several mining projects within the unincorporated area. We have development agreements approved for the Tykett Quarry, for the Stone Ridge Quarry, and also for the Tykett, Aspen 8 and 9 mining projects. And those development agreements require the payment of a cents per ton fee. We're also in the process of processing an application. This would be a use permit application for the Vineyard South project. And the cents per ton fee requirement would also be included for that particular project. In looking at the development agreements that were approved for the mining projects, there is a requirement for the county and the operators to develop a program for the collection, administration, and also the use of the cents per ton fund. So that's kind of what we have before you today. The following exhibit has been prepared to show the location of the Aspen 8 and 9 project site. It is located in the vineyard area, and it's shown in blue and green. And also the Tykett and Stone Ridge Quarry area, which is shown in brown and orange, located within the East County area, east of Scott Road. So this are projects that are going to be subject to the cents per ton program. The following table is a, a table that we had extracted from development agreements approved for those three mining projects. And what this table does is that it does show the cent per ton payment rate for each mining operator. So this is something strictly that was taken from the development agreements that were approved for those mining projects. In working with the mining operators, we were able to prepare this slide. And what the slide shows is the amount of cents per ton revenue that is anticipated to be collected from each mining site within the first five years of operation. So this is based upon extraction information that we have received from the mining operators. In regards to the distribution of the cents per ton funds, this is something that is contained in the cents per ton allocation program, which is attached to the board letter today. Starting with Tykett Quarry, 10% of the funds will be used for projects and programs within the consumers area. And the funds will be, and this is based upon feedback that we had received from the consumers CPAC. The funds will be deposited into a special account and will be maintained by regional parks. And then the remaining 90% of the funds will be provided to the American River Parkway Foundation. And those funds will be used for implementing programs within the American River Parkway area and also for general countywide open space projects. So moving on to the Stone Ridge Quarry, 25% of the cents per ton funds will be used for projects and programs within the consumers area. And then the remaining 75% of the funds will be maintained by regional parks and will be used for open space and also connectivity projects and programs throughout the county. Funds to be collected from the Aspen 8 and 9 mining site will be provided to the Parkway Foundation, and that money would be available to fund open space and also connectivity projects throughout the county. In looking at the cents per ton, cents per ton program, there are several key components to this program. And I'm just going to walk you through some of the key components that we have in this program. So it does provide direction for the distribution of the cents per ton funds. It also includes a payment schedule. There's also discussion in regards to accounting procedures, the setting up of deposit accounts. There's also information in regards to the formation of stakeholder groups and the compensation of those groups, and also the identification of open space projects. So the cents per ton program was reviewed by the consumers CPAC on many separate occasions. On April 26 of last year, the consumers CPAC did endorse the cents per ton program. And then on November 29, the program was then back, brought back to the consumers CPAC. This is based upon direction that we had received from your board. And the CPAC did review the cents per ton program. And comments that were provided by the CPAC are captured in the board letter that we have prepared for today's hearing. And at this point, where staff is recommending that the board adopt the resolution, this is a resolution that would approve the cents per ton allocation program.
Any questions? Ms. Rantoli?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Couple items, not so much questions, one question, but also some comments. Just wanted to thank Surrender for the presentation and certainly the work that staff has, has done. Bringing this back to us, I was able to accompany county staff to the consumer CPAC meeting in late November last year. And I know that Fred Hagie, chairperson of the CPAC is here. They had a conversation, I've transmitted the essence of that conversation to, to Leanne and to hopefully Surrender got that. Relates to, again, they support the program. Obviously, there's a component there for local identification and direction for funding that would come from the cents per ton for community projects that could include everything, as pointed out in staff report, recreation, law enforcement, fire safety, community enhancement for things that would promote the agricultural aspects of the community. But there was some concern expressed about the description, and I believe it's on page three, Surrender, I think.
Correct.
If you could help with that. And I know Fred's here, let him talk, he might, may want to express some specific thoughts about that. But I'd like us to, before we conclude this, I'm certainly prepared to support this when we get to that juncture, but to maybe modify that language so it's clear. I think it was clear when we left the meeting in November, I think it's been clear, obviously, with the operators here, the ones that are going to be paying the funds to the allocation. And I think there was a little uncertainty though, as Fred has, on behalf of the council, reviewed it as to the language. I think the intent is, is clearly picked up here, but recognize this is going to have a long tail to it as it relates to timeframe potentially that be clear to any reader in the future and that be clearly understood. And so I'm going to offer some suggestions once Fred's had a chance to, to address the board. I just also wanted to note that you've outlined where we have the cents per ton in place, the directives under the development agreements where the funding would be directed and whose authority it would be authorized to use. I want to plant the idea, I'm certainly sure that one of the operators in, in the briefing on their own project, this comes up later today, but that, and I would suggest that the planning department, certainly in county executive offices as well, look at this. As it relates to the Mather Verloppul Preserve, that we have monies going to. As it relates to the Mather Vernal Pool Preserve, that we have monies going to the local community, we have monies going to the American River, to general parks and open space and connectivity, and to the foundation that supports a lot of those activities. I think this board is going to have to encounter in future hearings, really, not only development projects, but also how we're going to fund the long-term preservation of that Vernal Pool Preserve. And so I guess I would like, at least from the standpoint of planning, and certainly maybe NAVU as well, to take that into account. I know we had a chance to talk about this on Friday. This thing is very important. Again, it doesn't necessarily determine any decision that we're going to make in the future, but we've talked about other areas that have needs, and the funds will go to help support those activities, but I do think that's an area where we're going to potentially have some deficiencies, and we've got to look to the treasure that that is, in addition to all the other things we're going to fund with these dollars. So with that being said, once we've heard from the Chair of the CPAC, then we can maybe come back to the language, Madam Chair, and refine that so that there's a comfort level with that, but thank you so much.
Also want to point out that we have had discussions with Fred Hegy, who is the Chair of the Kusumnus CPAC. We have prepared some alternative texts for the board to consider, so.
Oh, you have that ready already?
I don't know if you want us to roll that out right now, or you prefer to hear from Fred.
He's on the speaker list in support of the item.
Okay.
So any other questions?
No.
Okay. Go to our public speakers, that's Fred Hegy.
Been a long time since 2008. First of all, thanks to Surrender, he's done a great job for us, helping us out.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Fred Hegy.
Thank you.
The thing he brought up had to do with the verbiage on the, how the count was held and the direct reaction with the Parks Department, so that we're not having to have the Parks Department approve our funds. When we set this up, we wanted the board to do it. At the time, it was all Don's area. Well, for us, we just figured we'll get together with him, he'll look at what's on there, and we'll go through that way. So we acknowledged we needed oversight. But now with both him and Supervisor Frost, and I was told out by a couple lawyers here out in the hallway that we can't, instead of having the county executive as the oversight to present it to you, we assumed you'd come to our meetings, sit down with us and see what we're doing, make sure we're not doing something stupid, and approve it, but I understand you cannot do that.
Right.
Because of conflict of interest or something like that. So then we'd, of course, go to NAVGIL.
Okay.
The rest of the thing we seem to be happy with, there was one brought up last night, that we want to make sure that these funds doesn't allow the Parks Department to not help the Wilton Park Department because they think our money is good as supplanted. And that's not what it should be. They should still get whatever they've got coming. So, once again, thank you. Thanks to Surrender and Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Hegy. So Surrender, do you feel that his concerns, the CPAC's concerns, have been taken care of?
We have tried to do that, so is there any way I can project this?
Okay.
And also, I do have copies.
I don't think she can get them to us. Could you enlarge that a little bit, please?
Yeah, they can do it in the back.
In the back room? There we go. Oops, you got, went too big. There, thank you.
So what we're recommending is adding a new sentence, and it's shown in bold, and I can read that to the, into the record. It says the CPAC will establish a list of projects and provide that list to Department of Regional Parks for inclusion in the county budget to be considered by the Board of Supervisors. Pursuant to the adopted budget, a representative of the Department of Regional Parks will then attend a Kusumnus CPAC meeting and work directly with the CPAC to fund projects, programs, or other qualified expenditures pursuant to the adopted budget and as outlined in the Department, in the development agreements. I believe Mr. Hegy has seen this language, and it's acceptable to him?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, good work.
May I make a suggestion on the?
If you'd speak into the microphone, you can.
I would suggest, just for clarity, that we move pursuant to the adopted budget to work with the CPAC to fund projects, programs. You just take that out, we've already got pursuant to the adopted budget. That last sentence?
Oh, yeah, it's twice in two sentences.
Yeah, take out the first clause. So it reads, "A representative of the Department of Parks, et cetera."
You don't need any help with gerunds, do you?
I was trying to remember what a gerund was.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Okay, yeah, so you're just going, you say pursuant to adopted budget, once in the sentence.
And we're going to get rid of the first five words of that sentence.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So we have motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would move the item, and again, thanks to all those who've worked on this for many years in some cases, so.
Second.
With the language?
With the modified language.
Yes, thank you.
And that would replace the language that was in the, on page 3, at the bottom?
Correct.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thanks.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, for item 32, I do want to point out, if we have any speakers, if we need to take an oath. This is a use permit amendment to revise condition number 62 from a prior use permit to allow an additional eight-year time extension to complete reclamation of the entire 752-acre project site and to allow an additional three-year time extension to excavate an approximately 10-acre portion of the entire project site located on the north side of Jackson Road and east of Bradshaw Road in both the Cordova and Vineyard communities. The environmental document is a final environmental impact report, environmental impact statement.
So if there's anyone here who plans to speak on this item, you'd rise and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Do you.
Okay, and when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you.
All right, for the record, Surrender Singh, Principal Planner with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item, too. Starting with an overview, the project site is located on the north side of Jackson Road and east of Bradshaw Road, and the project area is approximately 750 acres in size, and it's located within the Vineyard and Cordova community area. The request here is, starting with some background information, on April 24 of 1996, the Board of Supervisors had approved a use permit to allow for surface mining on the entire Aspen 6 project site. This is a 752-acre site. A reclamation plan was also approved as part of the use permit. In addition to the use permit and the reclamation plan, 66 conditions of approval were also approved as part of the use permit. Condition number 62 of the use permit included a 20-year mining expiration date, and that 20-year was supposed to start from 1996. And the condition also required that all reclamation work be completed within 12 months of the expiration date. So the Aspen 6 mining operator is recommending or is requesting an amendment to condition number 62. The applicant is requesting for three additional years to mine a 10-acre portion of the project site, and the applicant is also requesting for an eight-year time extension to complete all reclamation needed for the entire 752-acre project site. So the 10-acre area to be mined is located in this location over here, within the western edge of the Aspen 6 project area. Some key points to this request, the site is 75% reclaimed, no changes to the approved project, project, other than the time extension is being requested right now, so there are no modifications that are being proposed to the project. So the only item before you today is the extension of time. The applicant is requesting for additional time to excavate a 10-acre portion of the project area. The additional time is also needed in order to regrade the project area and also to approve drainage patterns. We have reviewed the project, and we have determined that there are no new environmental impacts associated with this extension. And the operator has also agreed to pay a Sense Per Ton payment for aggregates that will be sold on the project site. Here's a picture that we have taken of the project area. This is taken off Excelsior Road, looking southwest. In terms of recommendation, the Vineyard CPAC did review the project in April of last year, and they did recommend approval. The Cordova CPAC also recommended approval of the project. The Planning Commission did review the project on October 23 of last year and did recommend approval of the project on a unanimous vote. We have received calls from area residents, but they were mostly inquiring on the purpose of the extension but did not object to the proposal itself. At this point, we're recommending that the board recognize the environmental coordinator memorandum, and we're also asking the board to amend condition number 62 that would allow for a three-year extension of the use permit for mining purposes and also require reclamation to be completed within eight years.
Any questions for Mr. Singh? Does the applicant wish to testify in any part of this?
Good morning. Michael Smith with Tyker Materials, and yes, I have been sworn. Absolutely not. We are in agreement with the staff report. Would like to thank Surrender and Mark McCollini for their work on this. Basically, this was one of our largest surface area sites that we've mined, and with the middle of the recession, it's taken us a little bit longer to get things completed, so just an opportunity to finish things off here. So unless you have any questions.
Mr. Tolle, do you have a question?
No, I just, I wanted to, again, note, it wasn't outlined in Surrender's presentation, but that in addition to all the previous requirements and certainly the extension that's requested today, they are dedicating an easement right away, actually, not easement, right away, for a future extension of both, I think, Kiefer Boulevard, which may have already been there, but certainly for Douglas Road and the modifications to, future anticipated modifications to the intersection of Excelsior and Kiefer, if I'm not mistaken. So those were modified conditions, but appreciate them taking that consideration, and, you know, as we're looking to do that Douglas Road extension, this obviously is a key piece down in the southern part, still haven't identified funding for that project yet, but working on it, so I want to thank Tyker for that.
Yeah, and we do agree with all the additional conditions that have been added that deal with right away for the various areas over there, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Anyone else wish to testify? Is there a motion on this recommendation?
Would move approval with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, item 33.
Okay, for item 33, this also requires an oath. This is the Northborough Project Community Plan Amendment. Two specific plan amendments, rezone, large lot tentative subdivision map, small lot tentative subdivision map, special development permit, affordable housing strategy, and a design review for the properties located on 16th Street and west and north of Gibson Ranch County Park, approximately north of the intersection of Elverda Road and 16th Street in the Rio Linda and Elverda Communities. The environmental document is a final environmental impact report.
We have someone who would like to be sworn.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Do.
Thank you. And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Thank you. Ms. Moffett?
Good morning, members of the board. Your board heard this project on December 13, 2017, and approved the general plan component of the project. It's backed for the remaining entitlements, and staff is recommending approval, and all those detailed actions are on page two of your staff report. However, before we get to that, we do have a comment from an in-holding property owner, and that is covered in your board report. On page two of your board report, there are a number of items that we understand that this property owner would like. The property owner is at 1701 and 1727 Casser Road. They have asked for a number of items, including a masonry wall to protect their livestock, trees to be planted for privacy, gates at two driveways, a rodent abatement program, a dust abatement program, and painting of houses and structures. Planning staff has worked with the applicant. We have recommended an additional condition on the bottom of page three, however, that does not actually address or recommend most of the things asked for by this property owner. We are recommending a double-sided woods fence that would have facing on both sides of the fence, so both property owners could maintain that. But I do believe the property owner wants to address the board today regarding that, so you may need to have a discussion about this and what you would like to see on this item. We did also cover in the board report a question that had arisen at the last hearing on the timing of the Elverda Road Bridge, and that's towards the bottom of page four of your board report. And then we also have a, some late-breaking correspondence that came in this morning from the FIAH regarding drainage concerns. That's both on this item and the subsequent Northborough 2 item. And so I'm not sure if that's made its way to the board members because it came in so late. It may have come after you were headed down here for the hearing.
I don't have it.
Okay, so it's essentially a comment letter that expresses concern about the adequacies of drainage and the drainage system improvements for both the Northborough Project and the Northborough 2 Project. We do have staff from Water Resources who are here to answer any questions, particularly with regard to the Northborough 2 Project. With regard to this project, the drainage information does show that there's going to be a reduction in off-site flows off the Northborough Project as a result of the detention basins. So the analysis that we have done shows that the flows to property owners downstream, such as to the FIAH, will actually be less under the approved and improved conditions than pre-project. And we do have Liz Carrington from Water Resources here, if you have any specific questions about that.
Okay. If you stay for just a second, Mr. Stern has a question.
Thank you. I just want to be clear and make sure I understand what you said earlier about some correspondence that was just sent this morning?
Yes.
And it's on something as significant as a concern about off-site drainage?
Yes.
And this is a concern that has or has not ever been brought up by the author of the correspondence?
I am not aware that the author had brought that up before.
We get a copy of the correspondence?
I don't have a correspondence or a request to speak from that person.
The individuals are not here today. They did not come to the meeting, and we can work on, if someone could go upstairs and get some copies of the correspondence.
So, Leanne, real quick, while they do that?
Yes.
I mean, off-site drainage seems like a pretty important thing for neighboring property owners to understand, and it seems to me that there's, how much time have they had, basically, to get this concern expressed to us?
I mean, I will say drainage has been a big focus of our staff analysis, certainly here, and it's been a big topic of conversation. It's come up, it was addressed in the draft EIR and the final EIR. I do not honestly remember off the top of my head the date of application of this project. It's been?
But what I'm asking is, basically, the author of the correspondence expressing concern about off-site drainage has had how many months or years to express concern about this, and we get a letter that lands on our desk as we're driving to work this morning?
Well over a year, I would say, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's probably appropriate to have Water Resources come to the podium, and you've seen the letter, and comment on it, so it's in the record.
Hello, and good morning, Chair Peters and board members. My name is Elizabeth Carrington, Senior Civil Engineer of the Drainage Development Group within Water Resources. This morning, I did read the letter. There was concerns on off-site drainage along the B Corridor, which is the most northern drainage corridor in the Elverda Project. If you can look, actually, I'm not sure if you guys have these.
You'll have to speak up a little bit.
Oh, my apologies, thank you. So there are conditions on the Northborough Project and the Northborough 2 Project that require the project applicant to submit an improvement plan drainage study. That study will demonstrate how the project will abide by drainage improvement standards, in particular, no adverse impacts to any surrounding neighbors. in particular, no adverse impacts to any surrounding neighbors, and conformance with the drainage master plan. And as LeAnn had mentioned, I do have the drainage study for the Northborough One Project, and it does clearly demonstrate a reduction in existing peak flow conditions in the drainage B corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Any further questions?
If I could, just having briefly written.
Natoli?
Yes, thank you, ma'am, sure. So you've done the studies, and you've done a flow comparison in the as-is condition versus in the fully developed condition, or will it be a phased approach on the detention ponds for recovery of runoff? I assume this is for water quality as well as for volume, or not?
We have looked at peak flow, and our intention, so we have an Elverda master drainage plan that looks at the specific plan area as a whole. And also, I have a Northborough One drainage study that does address peak flow, and our intentions is that-
Addresses what?
Peak flow. Peak flow.
E-flow?
Peak.
Oh, peak flow. Peak flow, okay.
Peak flows.
Excuse my hearing, I just, I heard flow, I just didn't know what the precursor that was, okay.
My apologies. And our intention, so as a department, we realize that the drainage improvements in this area are very complex, and there are a very wide variety of property owners participating and non-participating. So our intention was is that at the improvement plan stage, we require of all projects improvement plan level drainage studies that address peak flow and volume, and assure that all projects abide by the drainage standards, drainage improvement standards, one of which being no adverse impacts to any surrounding property owners.
Okay, so if I'm a downstream owner that wrote this letter, then I should have confidence that that drainage master plan, in accordance with then yet to be submitted improvement plans when development is approved and permitted, will provide assurances in that, you know, whatever runoff would occur naturally and/or in this current condition would be taken into account, and that there's not going to be issues of flooding or undue volumes that were there before. Basically, they're going to take care of the drainage on-site.
Yes, correct.
Right, this? Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one speaker from the public, Tammy Rager. Are, were you not through, LeAnn?
The only thing I did want to say is, we did prepare a graphic showing her project site in relationship to the subdivision that I thought I would put over here on the overhead that may help your conversation.
Okay. You can come forward, Ms. Rager.
Hi, I'm Tammy Rager.
If you'd stand between the two microphones, it'd be helpful.
Okay.
There you go.
Maybe, it has to stay on that, Tammy, for us to see, it has to be on that white spot there, so, yeah, there you go. There you go.
Okay, so my concern was fencing around my property to maintain privacy. I think they offered a wooden fence. My concern is, I don't want to have maintenance, and I don't want the wooden fence to be able to be dug under or by animals that could get to my livestock. So that's why I'm requesting the fence for my privacy and safety for my livestock. My other concern is rodent abatement, and I think they offered something that is just standard as far as what developers have to do regarding rodent development. And I would like more than that because I think the impact of the rodents is going to be more than just, I think they said equivalent to disking a field. So I just, if I'm going to be there, I don't want to have any problems with rodents. And what else? Trees for privacy and also a gate for my properties.
Any questions? Mr. Serna?
Has the developer or their representatives indicated to you that they're willing to maintain the fence?
Yes, and I-
Because you expressed that as a concern, I just wanted to-
Yeah, I don't want any maintenance. I need it to be to where I don't have to worry about a dog getting over and wiping out my flock, and then-
But specifically on maintenance, because that was your word, they've agreed to, have they not, to maintain the double-sided wood fence?
I'm not certain on that. And actually, from what I just heard, I'm not sure if they're offering to maintain only their side, or if they're willing to maintain both of the sides. And that's why I would want a masonry fence, because it's completely safe and there's no maintenance. But I'm willing to-
What about graffiti on a masonry wall?
I'm not going to graffiti on my side.
What about the other side?
It's going to be backyard fences.
Not my problem.
What about, what about against the street? Isn't there a street there?
Well, couldn't they graffiti on a wooden fence, too? I mean-
I don't go around tagging much, but I suspect that a masonry wall is probably going to be a little more attractive for graffiti.
And also, that would be covered in maintenance, I would imagine, that-
The same maintenance that they're willing to do for a wood fence? That's all?
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, sure. Tammy, I just recognize your request that as relates to development on your north side there, that's not controlled by Sacramento County. Obviously, Placer County's approved something there, and I don't know whether it's all constructed or not. So I'm not so sure that it'd be reasonable for this development to be required to fence your northern boundary. And you certainly have southern boundary exposure to Casser Road already. But as relates to your east and west boundaries, and I just, you know, I had a chance to, you know, brief with the developer and the representatives yesterday, and one of the things that occurred to me, certainly having thought about this, I was wanting to ask a question back in December, and at that time, I guess you were still in discussions with them, or this hadn't been at least surface as being a concern. But we had an ag residential area in this specific plan that we basically, by virtue of what's before us today, have rezoned, at least tentatively, and are considering, you know, providing now the maps that would go behind that and so forth, and all the conditions. And for purposes of separation, I appreciate what the developer has offered, but I wouldn't disagree that even though there's a maintenance agreement, that, you know, depending upon how long Tammy or any other subsequent owner would be there with livestock, and if they're permitted, her zoning, I assume, is going to remain ag residential. So she may have sheep and chickens, but somebody could have cows and horses. It would seem to me that it's not unreasonable that for the east-west exposures particularly, that there be a masonry wall. We've done this a couple-
Mr. Natoli, are we finished? Are you finished talking to Tammy?
Yeah.
I thought this was a question for her.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask her about, so you've asked for all four sides. I guess I wanted to understand what, you know, what the basis for all four sides was, Tammy, so that's my question. I mean, you already got a road in front of you, and there's development, so I've been curious, based on the request, as far as the, whatever type of fence.
Well, the road in front of me will be significantly changed as far as the traffic that's going, and the foot traffic and stuff like that. So to maintain my privacy is why I'm asking for that.
In the front?
My private property, yeah. And also gates, so security.
What about on the back? So how do you justify the request on the northern side of your property, though? That's not, the developer doesn't have anything to do with the property, you, but the county lies, I understand it. Is that right?
To keep the whole thing uniform.
Okay, all right. That's all the question I have for you.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
You can be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at the moment.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Nick Avdus with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of the applicant, in this case Gibson Ranch LLC. I'll make my comments brief. We've been in negotiations with Ms. Tammy for quite some time to purchase her property. The development of this area is obviously planned, has been planned for quite some time through the Elverda specific plan process. I will say, I was a little bit surprised to get these comments after our last hearing, after the extensive outreach and efforts that we've had. But in any event, be that as it may, we do want to be good neighbors, and we have proposed a condition that we believe satisfies the concerns about a properly maintained fence on the east and west sides of her property. And we've included in that a financing mechanism to maintain the uniform maintenance of that fence as long as she owns that property. So for us, while in concept, the masonry wall may seem appealing, I just, with all due respect, Supervisor Natoli, I just don't see what advantage a masonry wall gives the neighbor over a fence that's maintained, in essence, as long as she's there, by a common funding mechanism, whether that's an HOA or some other mechanism, to maintain that fence. In terms of some of the other requests with regards to rodent abatement, there is no special circumstances that I think would necessitate a higher level of rodent control. In this case, we do disc twice a year. There's a significant amount of disturbance. And as staff mentioned, I'll put this up on the board. As you can see, the property in question is right here. I mean, there's a significant amount of development, obviously, in the Placer Vineyards area, in Placer County, that aren't required to have some sort of extraordinary rodent control measures in place. We also, if you look at the staff report, received a request to paint her house, as well as install gates on Casser Road, which is an existing roadway, in addition to planting trees on her property and implementing a dust abatement program. You know, we want to be good neighbors. We feel we've offered a measure that should provide at least the screening and assurances that a fence will be maintained in terms of trees and painting of her house. Maybe we'd consider that sort of outside of the process with the county. It really doesn't have a place at this hearing. So I don't want to belabor the point. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is dust abatement pretty much covered under county standards?
Yes, it is. I apologize. That is covered in the EIR. We are required by the Air Quality Management District to implement dust control measures. It's standard on all development projects.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Avdus? Oh, sorry, Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So in the, is it correspondence from the adjacent property owner that you received, or was it a phone call, or what was it?
I have not had any direct communications. What I've been communicated has been through county staff, planning. I think these have all been verbal communiques with staff, resulting in the summary that's in the staff report.
With regards to how it was communicated, what was the rationale that was given for painting a house? In other words, what association, what link, what nexus was provided from the impacts of the development to the need to paint her house?
I honestly have no clue.
Okay. That's all.
Any questions? Okay, Ms. Frost?
Is rodent control, I've never heard a request like that. Is there an outbreak of rodents when you are developing? Is that an issue, or, I've never heard of that.
Well, I mean, certainly when you're disturbing the ground, anytime you're disturbing the ground, you're affecting nesting sites for rodents. It happens when we disc the property. It's currently an ag. It's grazing land, and we do disc it. And disking the property does, I guess, increase the activity of rodents because of that fact, but to the degree where it presents an intolerable sort of nuisance. You know, we had approached the other neighbor who owns this property here to confirm that she didn't share the concerns that were shared by the current neighbor voicing concerns, and she indicated that she has no problem at all, and in fact, has cats to take care of the rodents, so.
Okay, well, that's all for now. I'm going to support staff's recommendation and can move approval.
I'm going to second it.
Is there any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I'd like to weigh in on, as I started a moment ago, and certainly just conclude. I believe that there should be a masonry wall. We're rezoning this ag res to residential subdivision. We've all concurred with that, at least in our previous action on this. I support that. But as I started to make the point a little earlier, that this property remains ag res. Whatever negotiations go on or don't go on between the property, again, I think that it's reasonable from the standpoint of separation, and, you know, it's not unreasonable that you'd offer to have a maintenance agreement, but that puts additional responsibility for the interior landowner to then notify if there's a problem with the fence. And I think that the durability and the long-term viability of a masonry wall between an ag res, established operation, we're rezoning the property. It's not the developer. We, the county, are doing that. You have a landowner who may have made other requests. I don't necessarily concur with those. But I believe that in this case, and we've done it, I started to say it a moment ago, a couple of areas in the vineyard area where we've had this separation and concerns about the adjacent development, folks were not planning that particular time, and some of those cases have yet developed their property and may never. And I think when we rezone, and from the standpoint of the agricultural pursuits, that wood fences certainly can provide durability between, or separation between neighborhoods and so forth. But when it comes to livestock, the unpredictability about the types of livestock you might have there and so forth, I just believe that on the east-west sides, that we ought to provide for a masonry wall. If something happens in the intervening time between the current property owner and this developer or other developers, then that may take care of itself. But I believe strongly that condition, just muddle around with a bunch of maintenance agreements and some long-term financing that we build, require a maintenance, a masonry wall be constructed to separate existing uses from future planned uses that folks will want to have that quality of life and so forth. And so I'm going to certainly suggest to the maker of the motion, the second, or that we have a masonry wall condition. If you don't agree with that, then I, you know, I'll vote accordingly. But I feel strongly that, you know, as we develop in this county, that we protect the agricultural residential uses in a way that really is meaningful, and I think in this case, it's not an unreasonable request, at least on the east-west side, to have a masonry wall.
Ms. Frost?
Maybe Mr. Avdus can come forward. I just wanted to ask, because you made a comment that you were in negotiations with this property owner at some length. So she was considering selling her property, and you were considering developing it along with the rest of this project. Is that right?
Correct. We've actually been negotiating with her for years, since the initial project application for Northborough.
And the-
2010, 2011. It's been quite some time.
So the-
And we've had negotiations as recently as right before this hearing and the waiting area outside.
So she is considering selling, and in theory, because we've rezoned it, she might be able to get more for her property, and she, you could build that masonry wall, and it could be needing to be torn down in a short period of time because someone bought the property and now they want to develop it. Is that correct, or?
Correct.
Well, that seems kind of expensive, given it's likely that at some point, she may decide, I mean, this is probably going to go along with what the plan is in that area, right?
That's what I believe, yes.
I would think that if we wanted to do this, that we should change our policy within the planning department so that a landowner would know in advance what the potential cost might be, you know? Coming out of the blue like this, it's pretty unexpected. Thank you, Mr. Avdus.
What do you mean, the potential cost?
What Don was talking about, protecting agricultural properties, that if we really think there should be fences, masonry fences around all that, it should become a matter of policy for the county, so that an applicant going in knows that they're going to deal with that. Not in this case, however. Mr. Natoli?
Just Supervisor Frost, this is going to be a backyard fence for 21 lots. I can't imagine that if you put it, whether it's masonry or wood fence, she wouldn't be tearing down the wood fence either. So I don't know that that's, you might, if there was a different street pattern, but they have a street pattern outlined in the subdivision map, so whatever you put there is going to be pretty permanent. That's my view, whether it's masonry or a double-sided wood fence, because it's going to be the backyard or side yard fences for 13 lots and another 10.
But the developer is offering to build the fence on both sides and maintain it, put the financing mechanism in place to maintain it, so-
On their property.
On both sides.
No, yeah, double-sided-
They're offering to maintain her side, too.
Right. But if they build a masonry fence, they wouldn't necessarily have to do that, because it's just facing, it's still beyond those property owners' fence, I mean, a property owner's property. So again, I don't see it's going to be lost money. It'll be more money. There's no doubt about that, but.
Okay. I'm going to call the question here. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
No, I want to ask you a question about on the vote, if I could, before you, you called a question, that if I want to vote no on the portion of this application, there's a whole series of items. If it falls on subdivision map condition, then I want to vote no on that. So if you can tell me where I can vote no on that, I'm not going to vote no on the rezoning and so forth. I don't oppose that, so I'd like to ask that.
Okay.
So this would likely be a condition on the map.
Okay.
And the map is related, I presume we would be putting it on the small lot map, which is item nine-
Item nine.
On page two. So I think you would be good to go on everything but item nine.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'd register no vote on item nine.
Did you wish to make a comment about the motion?
Well, I just, yeah. Well, I just, yeah, I'd register no vote on item nine of the overall motion. I would support the remaining balance of that. So, if there's a way to call that out.
We need a vote screen.
I would, just to clear this up, because there's a lot going on. So, we're going to take two motions.
I think it's best, because it's a separate item. The map is its own entitlement. So, do one motion for everything except for the small lot map, which is item nine. So, let's do that first.
So, Ms. Frost makes a motion on that?
Second.
Secondor agrees. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, now take item nine, the small lot map.
Item nine, the small lot map. We need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion passes with Supervisor Natoli voting no.
Okay. And your next item, please.
Now, on item 34, if anyone's here to speak, we need to take an oath on that. This is the Northborough Two, specific plan amendment, rezone, large lot and small lot tentative subdivision map, special development permit, affordable housing strategy, and design review for a property on the east side of 16th Street, north of Elvera Road, in the Rio Linda, Elvera Communities. Environmental document is an addendum to the May 2007 final environmental impact report.
We're going to swear in the-
Oh, sorry. Please raise your right hand. The appropriate response is I do. Do you swear to tell the testimony to this board? And if you do not swear, that you will affirm?
I do.
Okay. And when you get to the podium, state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Moffett, here to give the PowerPoint presentation on this item, which is the first time you have heard this project. This is the Northborough Two project, also in the Elvera Specific Plan in the Rio Linda and Elvera area. It is immediately adjacent to the project that you just heard. This is on the east side of 16th Street, approximately a half mile north of Elvera Road, in the Rio Linda and Elvera Community. The request is for an amendment to the specific plan, a rezone, a large lot map for five villages and one park site, a small lot tentative subdivision map to create 364 single-family lots, a special development permit, an affordable housing strategy, which will consist of payment of fees, and design review. This was part, and is part of the Elvera Specific Plan, which assumed 324 RD5 lots and no park, and channelized drainage through the site. As a result of the drainage master plan that was done and amended by the board for the Elvera Specific Plan, there was a loss of overall units within the specific plan. And so, this project is seeking to capture some of those units while remaining within the overall cap. Here's a context photo showing the vacant area, and on the right, showing an outline of the project site, which is immediately south of the Northborough project that you just heard. Here is some context photos. On the lower left is the existing specific plan with the site outlined there. And then, on the right, is a map that shows the specific plan in the larger Placer Vineyard project area as well. The applicant is requesting to amend the specific plan. On the left side of the project, you have the big north-south 16th Street, which is someday going to be an extremely busy road. And then, through the project site, you have this circular loop road. The loop road bisects this project. The applicant is requesting to go from RD5 to RD6 to 7 on the west or left side of the loop road, and to leave the RD5 on the right or east side of the loop road. They would have a corresponding rezone, the large lot map, and the small lot tentative subdivision map, as shown here. There is a special development permit to allow for some of the neighborhood streets to have an attached sidewalk, rather than a detached sidewalk for those interior neighborhood streets. So, some of the components, there will be access to the future Elvera Specific Plan Town Center, about a half mile to the southwest. So, this site does not have its own standalone commercial. It would be relying on the town center in the larger specific plan. They are requesting 364 homes with a range of housing types, including RD5, RD7, and then some alley-loaded lots along that north loop road, which matches what was done in the Northborough project. That's intended to decrease the number of driveways that are fronting on that loop road, while still having houses front on it for pedestrian safety. There would be a five-acre neighborhood park along the loop road in the center of the project. With regard to drainage, there will be two interim detention basins located, let me see if I can figure out how to use the pointer here. There'll be an interim detention basin here, and, sorry, over here. And lots would not be able to be subdivided in that interim detention basin until off-site detention land acquisition can happen and those improvements be installed. The drainage does show that there would be no increase in off-site drainage as a result of both the interim and long-term conditions. Unlike the northern boundary, there would actually not be a decrease, but there would be no increase. There is also a trail system that is planned to link this project over to the Gibson Ranch Park. There will be full water and wastewater infrastructure, and the project has been reviewed and conditioned around all those infrastructure requirements, and there is a design handbook for the project. Because there was a prior SEQA document for the overall Elvera Specific Plan that did rezone this to its current RD5, an addendum to that EIR was prepared along with a new mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The original EIR had assumed 40 fewer single-family homes, and so, the addendum did look at that increase, and also included that because of the planned improvements on 16th Street and the high-traffic nature of that road, a sound wall will be appropriate on 16th. And there was revised off-site water and sewer infrastructure that this project is conditioned to match, that has been part of the overall specific plan review. The CPAC had heard this back in May of 2017. This project went to them before the Northborough project. It was your previous item. They ended up recommending approval on a three-to-two vote. Some of the concerns that they had had to do with the relationship of this project to the ag rez that has now been changed to urban in the Northborough project. So, some of those CPAC comments and concerns have gone away with the approval of the Northborough project. And they did ask questions about the affordable housing plan. This project will pay fees, and we will seek to expend those funds elsewhere in the more urban area of the plan, where apartments have previously been identified. They expressed concerns about piecemeal infrastructure, which has been something that staff has been working very hard on figuring out how to address in this kind of urbanizing area. Questions about trails and pedestrian access and the access and functionality of the alley-loaded residential units along the loop road. The design review advisory committee found the project in compliance and recommended approval. Planning staff recommended approval to the planning commission, and the planning commission is recommending approval to the board on a five-to-zero vote pursuant to their November 27 hearing with amended conditions. I previously mentioned the comment letter from the Fiatz, and that is the only additional comment letter that we have here. And we do still have water resources staff here, if you have any additional questions. So, this slide covers the recommended actions, which are also detailed in your board report.
Any questions for Leanne? Seeing none. I don't have any members of the public signed up to speak. Would the applicant like to speak?
Madam Chair, again, Nick Avdus with the Thomas Law Group. I have been sworn on behalf of Wind Communities, the project applicant for Northborough Two. I'll make my comments brief. First, with regards to the drainage corridor, I want to be clear that the comment letter received was for corridor B. Northborough Two is in corridor C. So, it's a different drainage corridor. So, our drainage for Northborough Two will not affect corridor B.
Okay.
In any event, just very briefly, can I get the overhead, please? Very briefly, this project is this area here, approximately 374 units. It was really intended to be a part of the entire master plan community of Northborough. There were some slightly different ownership interests, as well as minor land use changes that really dictated a separate project application. But the truth is that Northborough Two and Northborough One were really envisioned as a single master plan community, really built around the heart of the clubhouse, rec center, the sports park that's going in here, the elementary school. I think the product types that you find, as was envisioned in the original Elvera Specific Plan within the loop road, higher urban densities, obviously, the commercial core down here, we've stayed true to that intent and really provided a range of housing types within Northborough Two, but really within the entire Northborough One and Two projects. Everything from alley-loaded product to executive-style housing and everything in between. So, I went through the presentation for Northborough the last time around. I don't probably think you don't want to go through that again. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe this is very straightforward, supportive CPAC, supportive staff, and we haven't received any correspondence to date, other than the DWR letter on this project.
Any questions from the board of the applicant?
Remove staff's recommendation.
Give a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, I think that concludes the morning matters. We will recess. We do have a closed session, and we'll be back at 2:00.